The meeting of the Hubbardston Planning Board, uh, I'd like to remind everybody that planning board meetings are broadcast live and digitally recorded. This meeting is also being held both in person and virtually through Zoom pursuant to Governor Baker extending the COVID-nineteen rules allowing public meetings to be conducted remotely so that board and committee members as well as members of the public can participate remotely. So, the first item on the agenda is public comment. Uh, so when you say public comment for, it's if you are here for something that is not on the agenda. And I believe we have at least one, so.
That would be me. I'm Dolores Ordway, High Street. Um, I own this property on High Street. And the property is my house and also four acres next to it. It's actually all one deed. And it says two separate parcels. My daughter, who lives across the street, is interested in building on these, this four acres. But in making that a two-hundred-foot frontage, i- it makes the house lot that I'm living on now a non-conforming lot. Now, usually people would care about a non-conforming lot, but in our case, she would be the one who owns this anyway. So I'm wondering how the planning board feels about me creating a separate deed for the four acres and having another deed for my own parcel, so.
So your frontage is only on High Street?
Yes, this
Oh yeah, sorry.
This is the property where my house is now, and that is the rest of it. This backs up to the athletic field.
Mm-hmm.
I know we talked about that before.
Mm-hmm.
But if I, I've had Zoc survey this and there's been a plot plan and this is all, all proper and everything. So, I just don't know if I take away from my own parcel to create a house lot and that becomes
Nonconforming.
a non-conforming lot. Usually in the big picture, somebody would care, but it's already in a trust for my daughter who would be building a house there, so.
Who does the property, so, so you, uh, just some quick questions, so.
Mm-hmm.
Are you intending on dividing the property?
If, if I have to, I, I would. I mean, I don't, if I, if she could just build a house there, it would be fine, but I would be happier having her have the proper frontage as a house lot.
But it would be a separate dwelling though, right?
Right, yes, a house here.
Okay. Okay.
And and then I would stay here and then it's already in a trust to her, so that's, I'm just wondering.
Okay. That property is a single-family home, right?
Right, yeah.
And you intend, uh, to potentially put, potentially put another single-family home?
Correct.
So there will be two property, there were two, two single-family homes.
Right.
Thank you for clarifying.
So there's, there's a few challenges.
Yeah.
Uh, the, the first one being is we're not able to create a non-conforming lot when we split a property through an A and R.
Okay.
Um, it, it's something, I don't even think it's in our jurisdiction to waive it. I think we just have to follow it as a rule.
Mm.
We, we have to be creating multiple conforming lots to have jurisdiction. Um, there is a, uh, an auxiliary dwelling unit bylaw which might be something, but it's a little different than what you're talking about.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Because you'd be creating something that would either be attached to the house or potentially be above a garage. And it's limited at, I think, eighty percent the size of the property or eight hundred square feet.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
The structure, not the property, yeah.
Yeah, the structure. Uh, and the, the issue you might run into with the house is we have a, we have a zoning bylaw that essentially, uh, designates one building per property unless it's for agricultural use.
Right, yeah.
Yep.
So that, um, that could also potentially be a challenge for it.
Okay.
Um.
Sure.
It it might be worth talking to somebody like Zoc or your neighbors to see if there's.
Well, Zoc's already surveyed this twice and plot planned because the town was talking about buying it and then I was gonna sell it to the alpaca farm. But I was gonna sell this because I'm a widow now and I, um, was living on my social security, but I sense I've been awarded from the VA from my husband's, um, death a hundred percent, so I'm all set financially and I don't have to sell this now.
Yeah.
So, that, my daughter lives across the street and they're talking about building here, but we didn't know how to go about it because of the, the frontage.
No, yeah. Um, so, yeah, there, there's certainly some challenges.
So, yeah.
Uh, you could also talk to the, um, the new building inspector, uh, who is gonna be later on the agenda this evening
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
to see if there's any ideas there, but
Okay.
from at least a planning board standpoint, those are the challenges that, that we see here.
Okay. I go, thank you for talking to me. I know I'm, I'm not on the agenda, so.
Oh, no problem.
No, I appreciate the, the commentary coming.
Just wanted to, um, see where I stand with it because right now it's worth more altogether, of course.
Mm-hmm.
But, um, we can't do anything with it because of the, the frontage problems, so. So I guess you understand my.
We understand. We're like, we're sympathetic. We're just sort of powerless to do it.
So, I re- I really don't need this. I'd like to do something with it, but yet I don't wanna sell my, my property here.
Yeah.
It's an old eighteen hundreds house and, and everything, so.
Your challenge is, 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 is dividing the property in
Right, yeah.
in, into two, because again, from a frontage perspective, even though you exceed the frontage requirements right now,
Mm-hmm.
you do not have enough to break it into two properties that are.
Right. Right. And it can't be grandfathered in because this was signed over to me in eighty-four and I guess it has to be done before that to be grandfathered in as.
If, if you had, if you had divided it, which did not, which is not the case though, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because this is still all considered to be one lot.
Mm, it's still all one, right, yeah.
Yeah. Because it is all one lot at this point in time, in the present day.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, if, if it had been divided prior to when, whenever the grandfathering clause came in,
Right, yeah, yeah.
uh, then that would be a different set of discussions.
I, I think it, uh, we, Dolores and I had talked for this, not in the context of the board, but someplace else. I think that lot, your, you, was it your dad? Who, who owned it? Your family? What the house is?
My, my family owned it, yeah.
It had been a separate lot and then they acquired the land next door, right?
Right.
And the problem becomes that you lose your grandfathered status once the title merges.
Yeah.
So that, and then you can't re-separate them if there's a zoning lot.
Oh, okay, and that was in eighty-four, so it, it was.
Right, right. And our zoning by, our subdivision bylaws date back before then.
Yeah. Yeah.
Mm.
Yeah.
I'm not sure the exact.
So who should I speak with? You said the building? Somebody else who's coming or?
Uh, you can, you can also ask the building inspector to see if, if, uh.
Building inspector, okay. They, I'm sure that.
Creative.
And, and you could do the accessory dwelling unit if you wanna do it.
If he has any ideas. Yeah.
No, because this business, they would build their own property and their own garages and everything. We're not gonna join anything together, you know, so.
Yeah. Your total. Today's.
There's already a driveway here, but it's just a shame that I can't do something with it and, uh.
Yeah, it's a shame.
Okay, well, thank you.
That's fair. That's all the, is the more we can. Anybody else for a public comment that is not on the agenda?
I just, I am on the agenda, right? Chris Parna?
Yes.
I guess.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure in case I needed to speak now.
Yep. Okay.
There you go.
All right, so with nobody else in for public comment, next on our agenda is acceptance of minutes and up for acceptance, we have a bunch of them. We have five twenty-six, seven-seven, seven-twenty-one, eight-four, eight-twenty-five, nine-seven, and nine-twenty-one. Thank you very much, Mark. Uh.
I did wanna indicate that, uh, prior to this meeting today, maybe around between four and by five-thirty, I did some quick spell check-ins.
I saw you.
I saw you.
Okay. Uh, so they're, they should be in there. Okay.
Any other discussion or questions on those minutes? And give everybody a moment just to thumb through again.
Do you wanna approve individually or as a group or?
Um, no, it, that's more like there are for suggestions. I suppose when you just do them as a bunch, we can accept them.
I'm, I'm happy to do so based on my review of the.
And just, just so you know, I didn't, I didn't review the ones prior to September twenty-first.
I'll make a motion to approve all sets of minutes presented tonight.
I, I second that motion.
All right, so we have a motion to, uh, to accept the minutes. Okay, um, hearing, uh, motion and hearing a second, any discussion? Any corrections?
Already been made. Am I in?
All right, so recognizing that we have a quorum of the planning board present, let's have a vote.
Lipton, I.
Schneider, I.
Monroe, I. The, uh, the minutes of five twenty-six, seven-seven, seven-twenty-one, eight-four, eight-twenty-five, nine-seven, and nine-twenty-one are accepted. All right, so moving down the agenda into new business, we have what I believe is the most exciting item that we've had on the agenda in a while.
Yes.
Uh, we have our new land use administrator and planning board clerk, Mark. Uh, Mark, can you introduce yourself a little bit? I know, uh, from the last few weeks of working together, I am totally thrilled to have you, so thank you for being here.
Yep. Um, yeah, I'm, I've been living in Hubbardston for six years. I came from Jeffrey, New Hampshire, was a planning board chair and a CONCOM chair up there.
Oh.
Um, and I'm on part-time supporting the planning board, the conservation commission, and the zoning board.
I have to say we're honored to have you here and if anything, we're humbled with your experience and background.
Yeah, we very much appreciate the help getting everything back into order, so thank you very much. And as, uh, as we mentioned, Mark's also been appointed the clerk of the planning board for our correspondence that happened at the last meeting.
Excellent.
Um.
Do we vote on that as a point?
No, we voted on it last meeting.
Right.
Okay.
Yep. All right, any, any other questions or comments from Mark? Any questions or comments from Mark?
Uh, well, I'll, I'll, I'll hold until our next introduction.
All right, moving down the agenda, we have the next most exciting thing on our agenda for a while, an introduction to our new building commissioner, uh, Duffy Lancy.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here.
Well, thank you for coming. Uh, can, can you tell us, uh, just a little bit, uh, about yourself and your background?
I've been in construction longer than some of you've been alive, probably. But I've been a building commissioner since two thousand ten. I was for the city of Pittsburgh for seven years. Had to retire out, so since then I've been in, I was in Oxford for four and a half years. I've also simultaneously, I'm an alternate for Sterling, Lancaster, and Boylston. I work in Ocam currently and I'm here, so.
Well, we're very happy to have you and, uh, and, and very much looking forward to working together. And the, uh, the second item that comes on the agenda next to your name is a, uh, a brief discussion about how we can best work together in the future because we are super excited about having a building commissioner, so.
Yeah.
Um, I know we, we had, uh, at least a couple of questions. The, the first one being is in, in recent history, um, because of the situation we've had in town, people have been coming to us for, essentially for zoning determinations who's haven't found another avenue. We would very much like to not do that, uh.
Me too.
At least it's honest.
But you think you're the right person to.
That's part of the job, yep.
Uh, awesome. We are very excited about that and, uh, that's gonna become relevant to a few other things we're gonna be discussing this evening. So, uh, I don't know how long you can hang around for.
Well, I need to be on the road at four tomorrow morning, so I don't wanna be here a long time.
Okay, this isn't gonna be one of those meetings. We have had those, but this isn't gonna be one of those.
They're, they're clustered together. It's the next, next three agenda items.
Yeah, um.
How long do you have to drive home?
Not that far, twenty-five miles.
Uh, I don't know if you had any additional questions or?
Um, well, yeah, I mean, there are, um, there are several, um, about where, uh, you know, the intersection of where, where the planning board operates and the building inspection process. And that's come up a number of times recently and will come up in the next, some of the next topics. Um, Duffy had posed the question the other day of whether, whether there should be a planning board sign-off in the building permit process um, in the same way that there's a conservation sign-off. The conserva-, you know, I, I review building permits coming through to see if there are any potential wetland issues and contact the CONCOM if it seems like there might need to be a site visit in order to move the building permit process forward. In the same way, uh, there are a couple, couple issues that, uh, well, the primary issue that we've run into so far is building permits on scenic roads and curb cuts that are likely or frequently involve removal of stone walls and/or trees. So the question is, should that be a routine review of every building permit that comes through? Or in the, in the sense that it's a, it's typically a curb cut issue, should we ensure that that's part of the driveway permit process with DPW? Or are there other issues that you think might be germane to a building permit that, uh, we need eyes on from the plan, the planning board perspective?
So, just giving, uh, initial impressions on this, it, it seems like the issue that would come up the most would be the scenic, scenic road bylaw and that essentially would be somebody would just have to check against the list to see if the street appeared on the list.
Mm-hmm.
And then if it does, there's more steps. Um, I don't know if anybody else sees anything that would be obvious?
Well, with an A and R, as soon as we sign off on the A and R, we don't have any other say. I mean, you know, they can meet the setbacks and everything, but it's not a planning board issue. So, and if it's a use issue, it would, his call is allowed or not allowed.
Yeah.
So I think it mostly is the scenic road. I mean, it's conceivable that somebody's on a scenic road,
So.
gets a building permit and they're not gonna be altering the wall or cutting down the trees. Maybe it's a demolition, they're building a new house or something. But if it involves moving stones or cutting a tree in the right of way, then they have to come and it's a hearing process.
Right. I, I mean, right, right now, like I, like I said, we have the conservation approval step in there. And I'm the same person
Oh.
um, reviewing or, or associated with the CONCOM and the planning board, so we may not need to add a discreet sign-off to the building permit process. If I, if it's coming to me anyway, I can just review it for both issues.
Yeah, I think, I think for the moment, that's.
Yeah, I think that's what we've done in the past.
Yeah, I think for the moment that's the, the right answer, uh, because the other side of it is, is I don't want to build something into the process that could be difficult to maintain down the road because that's gonna work awesome with you sitting in your chair. Um, we need to be mindful about how robust we set things up for the future. So, I think for now it makes sense because it is the same set of eyes just looking at it. Maybe it just happens at an informal level. Um, if it's on the scenic road list, well, there might be something there, so.
This one other thing that sometimes comes up just to let him know is, um, sometimes a use is proposed and it's not clearly stated in the bylaw. You know, there's a little room there and that, that should come to us. So we had one, uh, parcel that was very hotly contested and they, we allowed a country club. Wasn't allowed use, but this was in, I mean, there were just issues. If it's a use issue and it's not crystal clear that it's allowed or disallowed.
Well, that, that also is likely a zone, wouldn't that be a zoning determination?
Yeah.
That's certainly where it would start.
Because it, although the, the country club was a tough example, I don't know if you were, if you've heard about what happened with that.
No.
We spent a couple of meetings talking about the definition of what a country club is. Because, well, does a country club have to have golf? Does it have to have a sport? Does it have to be an outdoor sport? Can it be an indoor sport with a pool?
Yes.
Because, uh, essentially the dictionary definition was a country club is a private organization for gathering and engaging in a recreational activity. It just said it had to be an activity, so anyways, it went on forever, so it was a, a tight judgment call. But I guess if somebody had a problem with what that was, they would just appeal it anyways, so they would just appeal the determination. So it's not like they wouldn't have an avenue.
Correct.
So I think that would just be part of a regular determination.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great.
Um, the other thing I, I did wanna broach and, and it'll come up again in these other, other examples, but, um, if a planning, uh, the, the way in which a, a planning board issue becomes an enforcement issue
Mm.
in, in a, in a building permit application, um, in term, in terms of a, a hold or denial or, or some action by the building inspector, um, on, you know, related to a planning board issue. There are times when that's gonna be appropriate, um, but I don't think we should do it lightly.
Yeah.
Because once you, once you go down that road, it cannot be unwound in a timely manner without a planning board meeting. Um, so I th- I think if we want something like that to happen, I think there needs to be a clear directive to the building inspector. Either, I mean, you could approach it as, you need to discuss it as a board before you make that request to the building inspector or it could be just a direct conversation between the planning board chair and the building inspector. But I think there needs to be a clear communication channel there before, before we do something like that.
So I, I certainly.
Yeah, be way, way in here Duffy, if, uh, you have any.
I'm letting you sink your ship.
Thanks for letting us pan out the roof. So I, I certainly agree with that statement. And one of the things that was challenging in the past is in our bylaws, there's like three or four different references, like sometimes it's building commissioner, sometimes it's building inspector, sometimes it's Z E O. There's a couple other terms that get used, but under my reading of it, um, essentially the planning board is supposed to refer to the Z E O for any kind of enforcement issue under our bylaws. Everybody else is?
Mm-hmm.
They're a little convoluted on the issue, but that is my understanding and appreciation of it.
We've had a lot of angst over enforcement issues and it's not been handled well.
Yeah, and where, where we had problems in the past was the, uh, the previous building commissioner, uh, would not show up to a planning board meeting when summoned despite the fact that that was clearly outlined in his contract, uh, and would not engage in any kind of enforcement issues. So we, we had had an issue with that in the past where we would, we would try to refer something for enforcement and it wouldn't get enforced. So we just kinda ended up on the hamster wheel on a whole bunch of issues. So I'm, I'm looking forward to hopefully that not being an issue going forward.
Hopefully it won't be an issue. Hopefully we won't be quickly thrown into that hamster wheel of things that have been going on for years that now.
Oh, we're saving them. We'll save all the old stuff. Um. Awesome. Any other questions or, or comments on this particular agenda item? All right, so moving down the list is one sixty-five Gardner Road. Um, so I'll let Mark talk a little bit about the correspondence we received on that and do we have the party here for it? We do not have the party here for it, so, uh, can you tell us a little bit about the correspondence that happened on that?
Um, so this, this was an inquiry that came in right about when both Duffy and I started, um, regarding, um, it's, it's a property on Gardner Road. Um, I heard through the grapevine that it used to be a daycare facility, actually, at some point in the past. But at any rate, the, the current owner, um, is pursuing starting a daycare facility, or starting or restarting a daycare facility. And came to us, uh, looking for a determination. Actually, she, she got referred to us, uh, from Kathy Hansgate at Florida Health. She was talking about some of the license initiatives with Kathy. And Kathy said, well, you better check and see if the zoning actually allows it. Um, so she came, came looking for help from, uh, land use department, building inspector, whoever she could not find. And basically, you know, I, I initially looked at our bylaws, um, and it spells out that, yeah, if it's a home occupation, then it's not a problem. If it, if it can't qualify as a home occupation, then it might require a special permit and that's what our current bylaw says. But when you look at MGL forty-eight, section three, exclusions from zoning, um, we're not allowed to require a special permit for a childcare facility anywhere in the state.
So that means that our bylaw at this point in time is in, is contra- contradicting what the MGL is.
Yes.
And certainly something we need to take a matter on.
Yeah. Yeah, I've, um, uh, I had actually helped research that issue and that was what I noticed, noticed when I went and looked. Cause I looked at the bylaws and was like, you know, it seems like there's a public policy thing on this. I wonder if there's a state law and yeah, there certainly is.
There's.
Yeah.
So it's, it's like with the greenhouse issue where our bylaws technically require special permits for greenhouse, but the state says you can't do that.
Is that any, any size daycare facility? Is it limited? I know home daycare is like six people, kids or less. Is it all?
Uh, there's actually two, um, I, I didn't research extensively. There's two, um, items in that, in that, uh, section. One is for a daycare facility and the other is for a, um, I actually put it up in the correspondence, uh.
Okay.
It's chapter forty-eight, section three. There's another item that is something like a.
Materials?
A rough, paraphrasing, a large, large daycare facility. That's not the language that they use.
Okay.
It was something like that. I didn't look to see what the definition was.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So I think you're referring to the Dover amendment. Uh, what the Dover amendment is, is it does not allow a planning board to uh, require a special permit or site plan for a school, a religious facility, or a daycare facility. That doesn't mean you aren't able to regulate it. You are allowed to regulate it as a site plan, but you're only allowed to regulate it for gross dimensional uh, criteria. So that is to say parking, zoning offsets, and those kind of things. If, if it is a daycare serving more than the, the, the home occupation one, which has another set of criteria. So there is, the planning board does, even under the way your zoning bylaw is written, you do have the right to generally regulate it.
Dimensionally.
And, and the parking plan? You give them the right to say you have to get a parking plan, under a parking plan?
Right, you, you can, you can stretch your, your authority within reasonable limits, so. I mean Belmont, if you've ever been to Belmont, they have a, uh, chapel, I forget what it's called. But the town didn't allow the steeple with Gabriel on the top of it and it went to court and that, that was micromanaging. They weren't allowed to do it cause it was a religious facility, but they were allowed to regulate the light flow and whether it was too much light or not enough light as an accessory used to the parking. So there's a reasonable stretch limit that you can, can do. I also took a look at this and this, this is a one-acre lot, so it doesn't comply to current zoning. Uh, and I, I, I know it's been a daycare and I don't know whether it's expired for two years or not, but it would be a, a non-conforming lot, but the use is allowed by special permit, which you can't do, so. Yeah, you gotta look, you gotta look conundrum.
Well, it, we can't. We can't require a special permit, but does, because we can't require one, does that mean we couldn't grant one?
Yes. You, you're not allowed to grant one if you're under master and a lot, but you are, but special permit process does require a site plan review.
Yeah. Mm, so.
And you are allowed to do that within restrictions.
So ultimately, are we looking at starting this as a zoning determination? Is that really what should be happening here first? That looks like you're nodding.
I would believe it does.
Okay.
Okay.
So let's, uh, let's do that. So let's, uh, let's do that.
So, um, as far as I know, we do not currently have a zoning determination request form. Would you like one going forward?
That.
Or do you want people to contact you informally?
They, if we create a form, we can have Gabby work on that, create a form for them, or they can just write a letter requesting a zoning determination. So they give us all the information. The problem with a form is what are you gonna miss? When you say I want X, Y, and Z?
There is a form. No, but there is a form. It should be in it, cause we put it together a few years ago. It's a request for zoning determination.
There's.
You can amend it and bring it back to us if you don't like it, but just the point of information.
You know what's going on in that part of the bill, the town hall? And we're trying to get so that we're all on the same page. Gabby is finding some things, I'm, you know.
Well, there, there is one asking.
Okay. So if there is one, we don't need to create one, we can just have Gabby find it. Make it available to people on the internet or however, so that they can fill it out and start the process.
So next question, um, you're about to leave town for ten days.
Yeah.
Is there any communication that I should offer back to this, uh, person inquiring?
You can have them, talk to Gabby, see if you can find the form, give her the form, ask her to fill it out. For me, the good thing is about, uh, six tomorrow, I'll be in an area that has no telephones, no internet, no nada. And on Halloween, when I get back into civilization, I'll be driving for fourteen, fifteen hours, so I won't be doing anything on Halloween. The twenty, November first, I'll start looking at all that stuff. Inspections and that type of stuff, Rich Regie is going to be doing next week while I'm away, so. I don't wanna have them start, him try to figure out a zoning determination and then get into a mess. Once his, and once his request for action by the building officials given to the town, I have thirty days to make those decisions. Being away for five shouldn't interfere with, five workdays shouldn't interfere with a timely response.
Okay, so I will track down this, uh, uh, request form, um, send it, send it to her and ask her to submit it to Gabby.
Yep.
Okay, anything else on that one? All right, moving down the list, uh, we have, uh, Chris, how do you pronounce your last name?
Parnell.
Parnell? And, uh, Parnell logging and land clearing, discussion of allowable uses in commercial zones. So come on up and tell us what you're.
Do I like stand or can I just sit here?
You can sit there, you can sit at the table, handstand.
All right, well, whatever it takes. My name is Chris Parnell. I live on Williamsville Road. Uh, I have been in talks with Kelly who owns the pallet place on Route sixty-eight. I'm looking to expand and set something up between the pallet shop and the new, um,
Storage facility.
And what I would like to do there is sell mulch products, agricultural products. I have a firewood and a firewood processor. And set up an area in there. I'm looking for the visibility, because where I am, I don't really have the visibility. I don't get the traffic down there. So that's what I'm looking to do, so. What I'm looking, proposing is I'd like to clear that area, neaten it all up. Put in some like storage bins for mulch and, and, you know, clean wood chips, et cetera, do you know what I mean? And sell them out of there. Also, I'd like to bring my tree length firewood there, processed wood right there in that area for sale, okay? And, um, I just wanna know what your thoughts would be, you know, with, I'm not looking at putting up buildings or anything like that. It would, you know, I'd wanna just clean it out, level it. You know, I think it would look a lot neater and I just wanted to see if I could get some thoughts.
No insult to.
I know.
I'm talking about dressing up.
Think I'm cleaning myself up.
Right, so, but I mean, I would, I would cut the trees in between. Basically, it would be all opened up.
What type of machinery are you using to carry out this type of activity?
To clear it or in?
No, no, once, once it's established.
I would have, I would have a firewood processor there.
What is that?
Uh, a firewood processor is something that takes.
I mean, just let people know because people are watching here.
Right, it's, it's, you take, uh, a piece of firewood, say tree length firewood. You put it on an in-feed deck, it goes through this machine and it cuts it to length and splits it. It goes up on a conveyor, it gets put into a pile. The idea is the more people that see it, the more visibility I get, the more that I should be able to sell my product, okay?
Is bringing in these logs yourself?
I would be, with my own trucks, okay? And, um, so there would be, you know, there would be trucks entering in that said property.
And that happens, uh, twelve months of the year or a certain season? Is it seasonal?
Pretty much, it's, it's, it's not, I wouldn't say it's seasonal. It happens throughout the year. But it's not like, it would happen throughout the year, but it's not like constant truck traffic or anything like that. But there would be trucks going in and out of there when I bring in the firewood or something like that. Or we're trucking in mulch to put in the bins. You know, right now, my idea is not to make the mulch there, okay? There's just not really enough room. I just wanna be able to sell it there because of the visibility of, you know, Route sixty-eight is well traveled.
Well, that's why I was asking about machinery. I mean, you've, you've explained one of the machines, which is the one which basically, uh, cuts things down to the certain size and then splits it.
In conjunction, you would also have a loader which would be there to load the wood onto that.
Like a conveyor belt type of thing or?
Well, the loader itself is like a bucket loader.
Oh, a bucket loader you're talking about.
Yeah, that's what you would use with a set of forks to load the firewood. There'd be a bucket, you know, there is.
So the mulching activity, the creation of mulch is not taking place, taking place there, so there's no machinery for that where you shred things to
No.
make that mulch.
No.
Okay.
No, I would just wanna bring the mulch, put it there.
But from a stationary machinery that you're ready, that can be placed there, that's the one and only one is the one you have just mentioned, right?
At this time, yes, I'm looking at putting one firewood processor in there along with a loader, you know, in conjunction with that to load the firewood on the deck, process it. Obviously, you'd be putting trucks in there to take the firewood off. It would be no different than like, um, what you would see at say, uh, like what J D H does in Templeton. They sell mulch products out of those, you know, like cement bins, et cetera.
So key word is, you said at this time.
Well.
What, 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 what do you mean with, with future? What do you anticipate?
I, I don't, I don't think that there's really enough room there. I mean, I don't have any plans on putting a, a mulch, you know, a grinding thing in there. There's, there's not enough room. And there's not any point, okay?
How many square feet or yards or acreage are you thinking that this will take?
Well, depending on what I can work out with Kelly, she can answer that.
Yeah, I think that's what we're here for is to find out what the requirements are, if they're the same as residential, where it's two acres and two hundred feet of frontage, or is it different? Because it's industrial, it's, you know, different zoning.
Are you selling this piece of property?
Yeah, I would be selling a piece to him.
Ah, okay, now I understand. I thought for some reason that was, you were subdividing, uh, sorry, you were subletting.
Yeah, no.
No, okay.
I mean, it was just, we could do either, but I thought just selling it would be easiest.
What's, what's the total frontage you have there?
Um, I don't know about the frontage. I have, um, like over, mm, seven and a half acres, um, I mean, I have the, I have the plan.
The frontage on?
All the frontage is on, on sixty-eight, yeah.
On sixty-eight? Yeah, yeah. No, that I know, but you don't know what the frontage is right now.
I don't, I mean, I just want to figure it out.
So you would be, excuse me, preparing, preparing a subdivision plan for us to review?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, Whitman and Bingham usually comes in and does it for me. I just kinda tell them what.
So I think there are, there's a multi-step process. One would be to, to do the surveying and see if you can do, you know, how, what the, that piece of land would look like. And then, um, I thi, I do think that any new business requires, whether it's allowed or not, a parking plan, a driveway plan, a layout, right? That the building inspector looks at, that we look at. And, and I also think, I don't know about that lot, we're gonna kind of figure out, I know where the storage locker was, cause that was a huge, it, before us.
Right.
So this is between that and your lot?
Yeah, so, um, the pallet shop, um, I actually own all the way over to where the storage unit is being built.
Yes, okay.
But there's sort of some new woods in between me and, um, so it's me and then woods and then a little bit of property and then the storage unit. It would be that little chunk there.
So if it, do we know that it doesn't have wetlands? I mean, that's.
Oh, we would have to look all into that, yeah, yeah. We're just wondering if it's allowable use and what do we need for acreage and frontage?
You'd have to look at that.
And then we would take it from there.
So that's, uh, that sounds a lot like a zoning determination.
Well, but the basics of lot size applies.
Yeah, but the, the basic information, that is a commercial district.
Correct, yeah.
So, uh, I, I would think it's potentially under H or Q, uh, which means that it's after G and that's the important part. Uh, because anything after G requires a site plan approval and, um, environmental and community impact analysis. So I think we're looking at a zoning determination here first and then us doing potentially a site plan review and community impact. And anytime we do a site plan, we end up hiring, uh, outside help for that. So that would involve paying the board's consultants for it.
I don't remember doing anything other than presenting, um, a, a plan to the planning board, because I actually owned all the way up to, um, the, uh, retention pond up till a couple of years ago. And all I did was, um, Whitman and Bingham came out, I told them how much I wanted to sell off. They split up the land, we gave you the plan and you, um, asked questions and then approved it and it was good to go. We created an address and with the building department and we were off and running.
Well, that's, that's a separate question from what it'll take to set up, set up and operate the business, so.
So I, but we wanna know is, you know, how much land does he need? And it is, Alice, you said two acres and two hundred feet of frontage?
Eighty thousand square feet and two hundred feet of frontage is our minimum requirement.
Okay. And that's for both industrial, commercial property as well as residential?
And then you had to set back. Right.
Okay.
But there are a lot of, there's a lot of other issues, that eve, even with that A and R, you need to look at the wetlands issue.
Yeah. Yeah.
Any buffer issues. I know there was, there was quite a bit of, um, negotiation. The storage locker unit had some real important issues in that frontage area.
Yes, yeah.
And also, we do need to regulate like how much sound this would make, the, the hours of operation, because there is a neighborhood that it backs up to.
Right, yeah.
That's pretty actively.
Yep.
Yeah, looking after their rights.
Doors.
Light in the neighborhood, right?
I had a kid, right, we're in that section. Yeah, so, but I think we just wanted a starting point and is it something that isn't allowable use, which we'll talk to zoning about? And then what do we need, you know, what are the requirements for the, the, um, actual footprint of what he wants to do?
Um, what's the best way to eat the elephant here?
Why not sketch out what you want, do a drawing, put together a request for determination, which they're looking at. Let our new zoning inspector take a look at it first. And, um, bring it back to us with his questions and.
Okay.
Yeah, and ultimately, uh, if it got to the point of where we're doing the, the site plan approval for the business association, it would most likely be Places and Associates that we would be hiring for that. Uh, and I don't know if Places Associates has any comments that they would like to make about it in the moment, but, um, but that would be the process for going through and doing that.
It's okay. Do you have any questions?
Any other questions?
I just, I guess the most important thing I wanted to know is, is there anything that you see that we, that we wouldn't be able to do as far as a use? Strictly from the use, not anything else?
Well, the, uh, the bylaws for the commercial zone allow, uh, light manufacturing or processing facility. That's, uh, that is section H. And then section, um, section Q is, uh, sales rooms and yards for the sale of farm equipment, contractors' equipment, provided that the stor- uh, no, there's another one I thought was closer.
I, I is generally, general storage.
Yeah, warehouse storing, yeah, that's, uh, that's junk vehicles. Oh, other than, other than, that's everything but, yeah, so it's, uh,
It's not.
There's a good argument it fits under one of those allowable by right uses. So it wouldn't be a full-on special permit, but it still would be a site plan review, which is still a process.
Yep.
Uh, not as big as a, a special permit process, but involves plans and, um, and working with our consultant and a whole bunch of things.
Good enough.
And you, you don't intend on having customers go there and purchase things? You just want visibility, correct?
It would, well, we're looking for the visibility, but I'd wanna be able to, you know, people would be able to come up and buy mulch or, or load it in their vehicles, just like you would at say Agway or, or along those lots.
Well, Country Trail does something similar.
Exactly, you know what I mean?
Okay, so something similar to what Country Trail has on the left-hand side, where he has mulch and he has sometimes other material, right?
Yes.
You can raise something like that.
Question, does he need, because it's sixty-eight, a driveway cut then, a separate driveway cut with clearance from the state or anything?
Uh, not yet, no.
No, okay, okay. So just from our driveway permit, you have to go through that?
Yeah.
Okay, the parking plan, okay.
I was just looking for thoughts, you know, you guys do this a lot. I don't do this very often. I figured you could get, give me some insight, do you know what I mean?
Well, I hope we satisfied that.
Sure.
With the best of our abilities.
Yeah, well, we know where to start, do you know what I mean? And, uh, it wasn't a resounding no, so that's always.
Okay, no, no, it's, it's, it's not, it's, uh, we, we need more details, what we're saying.
Yeah, no, that's fine. We just, this was just preemptive.
Yeah, there's no red lights is what, I think is what you're asking, right?
If I come in and you said absolutely not, I would say my time, I wouldn't waste my time or my money.
Yeah.
And we're saying there's, there's no red lights right now. I think it's very important for you to realize however, you really wanna make sure that you look at the property, check the wetlands.
We haven't, we haven't done, we haven't yet until we can.
Check if there's any kind of dangerous species, things of that nature that always crops up and those are unknown to us.
When you check the wetlands, check the V C R map too, please.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's what kills a lot of people in this town.
Yep.
I've got some good connections in the V C R.
Some matter connections somewhere.
No, no, I mean, they can get me the wet man, the map, that's, that's what I wanna see.
So can Whitman, or Haley Ward now.
Excellent, well, if that is, that everything on that.
Yeah.
Well, thanks for coming by.
Good luck.
No, not unless you're watching.
No.
All right, so next down the list is five A New Templeton Road.
Okay.
Uh, and do we have anyone here?
I just, I spoke earlier and you told me to speak to the building inspector with my story, is that? Should I tell him now what I'm trying to do or?
Uh, we're gonna be needing him for this too, so you can't steal him.
Okay. How should I speak with this man?
Once he's done?
As soon as they say, good luck with this one, I'm headed to that door, I'll chat with you right over there.
Okay, that's fine, that's all I need to know.
Yep.
They tell you you need to just give you a request for zoning determination.
Yeah, we gotta hold you, hold you for one more after this one.
Thank you.
All right, so, um, Mark, can you talk, uh, a little bit about the procedural history here?
Uh, so Ivan, Ivan came in two weeks ago. I think it was the fourth, it was either the fourth or the fifth. With two, two tree cutting permits that he downloaded from our website, from, he. From, he had already talked to Jeff Bork, the tree warden, about two, two large oaks along New Templeton and a stretch of, well, it's not in Jeff's jurisdiction for the stone wall, but at, at any rate. He had started the process with Jeff and then had, had two application forms, one is for the planning board, one is for the select board. I wasn't sure which, you know, I was just catching up on, on what this was all about, so I wasn't sure what, what he actually needed. But then I talked to Jeff and Jeff explained that the scenic road goes to the planning board only, it doesn't, doesn't go to the select board. So you, you only need to do one of those applications, so that was good. But then I was trying to figure out the requirements for what, what you require for review of a scenic road application. And, you know, it was, it was taking a while to collect that information. And about, about five or six days after this, the, the lot was cut and including the two, two trees along the roadside and the stone wall was removed. So, the, the start of an application was submitted, it never, it never went to completion. And now we're dealing with a situation after the fact of the, the, the trees being removed and the stone wall being removed before you, before you got a chance to review this.
So just for the, the benefit of the public, we have a scenic, a scenic road bylaw. And roads that appear on that list, if trees are to be cut or stone walls are to be removed, there's a permit process for going in front of the planning board that requires notice, notice of being published and I believe to a butters.
Yeah.
Um, we've been doing these hearings for a while and it's something that the planning board takes pretty seriously. Uh, because it's been, it's been a policy win for the town, uh, because we've had a longstanding scenic road bylaw and we have these amazing tree-lined streets because of it. And a lot of towns that, that are neighboring us that did not do it are in a very different situation. So it, it is something that we take pretty seriously as a board.
Mm-hmm.
So I guess as, as a board, we're, we're in a position where we have to, we have to make some decisions here. So I guess first, what happened here?
Um, I hired a logger to cut the lot and I'd want, told him I wanted the lot cut, but I didn't communicate effectively enough that I did want those trees cut, but they couldn't be cut during this time, the two oaks by the road. I had to wait to get authorization from the board and approval, so just because the lot got cut and the trees got cut with, next to the orange stakes with green ribbon, and they were supposed to be cut later on after getting authorization, but they got.
Yeah, I, um.
So it's my, it's my mistake that I made with not telling the logger as much information, real clearly what was needed to go on.
Okay, so just to, to talk briefly about it, the, I don't know if you've had a chance to look at this bylaw in terms of what the remedies are and, and what the, the recourse of the town is. It's $300 per violation with a new violation being assessed each day out of compliance. So, um, that's potentially a pretty substantial violation, so with, with that kind of setting the stage, I'd like to open it up to discussion and questions from the board.
I have a couple of quick questions for Mark right off the bat, what, what, can you again enlighten us in terms of the date you received the initial request? From Mr. Aho, is it Aho or Aho?
Aho.
Aho, I apologize, uh, from Mr. Aho, and when, when, when you received that request, what was he informed? And the other thing is, is when were, and then I'll go back to you, I have some questions for you.
Um.
So when, when did you receive the initial request?
We. Yeah, I received that on Wednesday, I think that's the fifth, I don't have a calendar in front of me.
Okay.
But, um, and, and the, the communication we had was that, um, basically I didn't know what I was doing at that point, but I would find out what was involved in the application and get back to him.
But you made him aware that this was a scenic road request?
Hmm, one of, one of the applications is a scenic road application, but we didn't have that discussion because I didn't understand the distinctions at that point.
Okay, so he, he was aware of that. I, I get it, right, then the second one is, is, uh, so on, on the fifth, he came, he provided you with the information of what he wanted to do? And at that time, was there any further communication after that, be, un, un, between then and the time that you?
Not, not with Mr. Aho.
Okay.
I had communications going back and forth with Chris.
Fine.
Or not.
Thank you, when was the, when was the tree cut?
I believe last week.
Any update?
On, I, I noticed that it was cut on the 12th, because I had gone to have my weekly meeting and I went to go look at the site and noticed the trees were already gone.
So it's fair to say that at least as of the 12th, that is the earliest that we know, when were the stone walls removed?
Stone walls were removed prior to me buying the land, I noticed that, there was a section removed, I'm assuming years before I bought this land.
Did you remove more?
No, left it as is.
Do we have any photographic evidence on this here?
Uh, a- after, after photos, not before photos.
And you have them or who has them?
Uh, yeah, I do have them.
Okay, is this something you can maybe upload and share with us?
Um, yeah, not this moment.
No, no, I, I get it, I, I'm just asking if you can.
Actually, they're probably in Chris's email, if you're on hearing, you know. It'd be, it'd be a thread with Jeff Bork from this past weekend.
You mean it was an email that was sent to us?
Oh. We, uh.
I didn't sign my, my whole board.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Can you promote John Demoliya, he apparently been waiting on Holden Zoom for a while?
Chris?
Sorry, John?
Chris?
Yes.
I thought I was coming.
Okay.
I didn't know there were things going on.
Okay, yeah, that's, uh, do you need to go right now?
She's asking, did I put these taker?
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, and we'll just, we'll let you know what the outcome is.
Yeah, I'll be. Intention.
Okay.
Okay.
Sorry, I, I didn't know you needed me longer.
Thank you. No problem.
Okay.
Thank you for coming.
Good to meet you.
Yeah, thank you for coming.
Yeah.
Can I ask when Jeff Bork got involved in this, because he's certainly aware of the scenic road.
Oh, yeah.
Can, can you make sure you're not muted because John Sane is not hearing sound?
It would.
His press still got his earplugs in from shooting.
I think that should do it.
Okay. And you promoted him, he probably just hasn't accepted it yet.
I did.
No.
Okay. Okay, so hopefully John will see that.
Uh, so anyway, the last question was Jeff Bork.
Yeah.
Um, it was, I think it was the day before he came in with the forms, so that would have been the fourth.
Yeah.
Or thereabouts.
And what did Jeff Bork tell you?
I have no, take a look at these, please go to the town website and under the planning board, look for tree removal, I don't know, that was before the third. Didn't hear anything from Jeff Bork after that. For the fourth or fifth.
You got, you, you guys were out there on the site, weren't you? You said you looked at those trees, maybe it wasn't with you.
He must have went on his own.
Okay.
But we do have the scenic road bylaw and that form on our website.
Mm-hmm.
So if he was directed to that website and, and our own tree warden told them to go look at it, then I don't really think it's an error on our part in terms of delaying things.
Mm-hmm.
And it sounds to me like a reasonably serious violation, how big were these trees?
Yep.
In diameter?
Good size, they're probably 30 inches or better.
Okay.
Really?
Yeah, old oaks.
Wow. So whoever took these took a valuable commodity, not to mention the trees. So I know, we, we have had this situation occur before, and all we've had people do is file um, for a remediation plan, it's basically the same form for the scenic road tree, showing the dimensions of the trees removed, where they were, the amount of the wall disturbed, usually you can't remove a tree that size without disturbing some wall. And then we have a site view and then we put together a remediation plan, which would at the very least involve, unless there's some, some other reason not to, the replanning of those trees and, you know, I mean, it'll be up to us to look at the evidence from it.
So I guess there, there's also a question to start with, where, where you originally looking for removal for the trees because it was necessary for access with the driveway or was it just to?
Driveway line of sight was very hard to see, when you, when you stood there and you looked left to right, it was very hard to see the road. So it was a safety issue for oncoming cars when you're trying to enter right or left.
So, so I think there's, and, and ultimately, we're gonna need more information to decide what's going on here. I think we need, I think we probably wanna look at both remediation plan and at what your completed application would actually be. Does, does that make sense, because I, I think there's two different courses here. And one of the courses would be if we would have granted it, um, if we would have granted it anyways, then I think that kind of changes how we look at the clock on this, but if it's one that we would not have granted, then, then I think we are looking at kind of what I see as the most serious violation here.
Maybe, maybe what we should do is ask him to pay a fee to have our expert go out and evaluate the situation. And not, and cease to do any more work on the project until this is resolved.
Well, the project is stopped right now, right?
Yeah.
Okay, which, I think that, that takes care of that.
Well, but, but Bill could go out there and he would say, this is within the site view, it isn't within the site view, these were the dimensions of the trees.
Oh, yeah, no, I, I agree. Yeah.
And this is what, you know, what in his mind a reasonable remediation would be.
Yeah.
And if we're gonna replant trees where they, you know, how much, I mean, so through the chairs, because it's your call, I would ask Bill how much it would call, it would cost him to have, for him to go out as our consultant to look at this
Yeah, no.
and make sure that that money is deposited with the planning board, for him to go out there and do that and report back at our next meeting.
I think that's a good suggestion, Francois, it looked like you had something first and then we'll go to Bill.
No, let's go to Bill directly.
Okay.
I'll verify, question later.
Some lady just walked in, she had the code, though.
Um, guessing no more than three hours, which is $150. And that would include visiting the site, putting something in writing and coming back to.
Okay.
I didn't, you know, I'm kind of deaf, what did you say the figure was through the math?
A few hours, likely no more than.
Three, three hours, three hours and you, and that was, how many?
Three hours.
Yeah.
Four fifty.
Four fifty.
Sorry.
Okay, no, no, that's fine, I don't hear well, well, I, I mean, it's up to you, but why don't we ask him whether he will get us a check for four fifty? So we can say, make table, well, to the planning board, but it will directly go to our consultant to go out and study the situation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Were there any redeeming?
Yeah, 'cause I.
Features in this.
Do you have, do you have a plan already in terms of what it is that you wanted to build there?
Yes, eventually a single-family home off of the driveway.
So you're the owner of the property and you're intending on living there?
No, building a home.
Okay, can you make that plan available to the board so that we can also review that? Because I think in context with what you're gonna be reviewing there as, as to whether or not what is being planned, has, i- it's, not only is it feasible, but it also as to whether or not alterations could be, could have been made, so as to not only salvage those trees, but to come up with some alternative mechanism, right?
Uh-huh.
And then the only other thing I would ask and request is, is while you're there to, because I, I know you've, you've, you've studied stone walls quite a bit, um, and you can probably assess whether or not these were recent removals or not, I, I'd, I'd just like to ask.
Please Google Earth.
You're sorry?
I'm looking Google Earth right now.
I'm not just asking.
We can do a screen view from Google.
I'm asking, I'm asking you just to, to assess where it's now versus where the Google Earth says, which could have been a year ago, two years ago.
Sure. Right.
Right? If you can have that and tell us, that would be great.
Uh-huh.
Present day is better than Google Earth, God knows whenever. Let, let me ask you a very quick question, I, I understand you, you, you live in Ridge, you're, you're in the construction business?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so yeah, uh, that, that sounds like a, a reasonable solution to me.
Okay.
I, I would rather do something like that instead of just levying fines, because I'd rather have a way to go forward and I encourage you to, to take a look at that bylaw, because we can levy some pretty serious fines on this and we still can. So it's very much in your favor to, to get that check in as soon as possible, Mr. Murray?
I'm working for the Aho family in Air, is this the same family?
Um, I don't believe so, but it is a common surname.
Okay.
Okay, I just didn't wanna conflict with it.
Can you.
Many, many Aho's.
Can you check to make sure that you're not conflicted and report back, but we'll just assume that you're not?
Yeah, if he said they're not.
Okay.
He, he, he's a fairly large developer.
Okay.
Okay, I would also like to state that, I mean, since we're talking that the clock really for all intents and purposes started on the 12th, today being the 20th, that basically that spans a total of eight days, uh, right?
Yeah.
So, I mean, I don't wanna further penalize you because we have some waiting periods here. But what is right now in scope is basically eight days of penalties of $300 a day as a result of what actions took place at the location, okay? Um, whatever comes back here, we'll determine whether or not the full amount is potentially under purview by the planning board as an assessment of a, um, of a penalty, or whether or not it's something different, okay?
Okay.
And we reserve the right to review that based on the information that comes back from, uh, uh, Places and Associates.
Okay.
All right, do we need a, a kind of motion on this, you think?
Can I ask for clarification first?
Yes.
Yep.
Um, so at, at this point, you're not driving it forward in a normal hearing with an applicant, with an application, notice of public hearing and all that, you're gonna go through a technical review step first and decide where you're going from there?
So I, I would like to suggest that you also prepare the application as if, um, as if you were submitting it correctly, so that we can take a look at that along with the technical review and I imagine Mr. Murray can help you out with that if there's any questions. Uh, as far as, do we, would we still need to have that published?
Yeah, you need to hold a public meeting.
Yep.
Yeah.
You're not a hearing, I think you're a meeting for stone wall, uh, scenic road.
It gets published though.
Yeah, there's, uh, it has to be published and a butters have to be notified.
Yeah.
I believe the language in the bylaw is hearing.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it is a hearing.
So, well, we'll figure that out with you and get that right, working with Mark and with, uh, with Bill. Um, but, um.
Let's go.
Yep.
Well, do you want me to head out there tomorrow or over the weekend and, and just get that wrapped up before the check gets in? I mean, 'cause it's, you're, you're, you've got a little leverage.
When do you think, when do, when do you think you can have, when do you think you can have payment to, to, to the board?
You just need a check to the town of Hubbardston for four fifty.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
I could write a check out my man.
Perfect.
Okay, yeah, so, take a look at that.
Yes, please.
And we'll, we'll figure it out from there and, uh, I, I hope we can work together on this, and work together on this and come to a good solution. I think it turns out a lot better for everyone than just assessing $300 a day un- until it's remedied like the bylaw suggests we can.
So as I think Francois suggested, I So as I think Francois suggested, I really shouldn't give you a letter. I should do the site investigation absolutely, but I really shouldn't give you a a letter until I see his plan to say yes, the plan was a reasonable blah blah blah, or you just want me to focus, I mean?
I can, I can, I can send you a copy of it tonight. It's it's filed with the building permit application.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And.
I, yeah. Do you remember exactly what was uploaded? Is it the full, full site plan?
Yeah.
Okay.
And this is also potentially saving you a week or two since our building commissioner's gonna be traveling, so. Okay.
Um, sorry, final question. Um, the application form, uh, there are at least three generations that I'm aware of. The tree tree warden site page has one, the oldest one, which is what, five and filed last time around. The planning board site has a intermediate generation and then there's a most recent generation that you guys talked about relatively recently, last year or maybe?
Yeah, we revised it, we revised it last year, so you need to use the most recent one.
You want it on the most? You want it on that form?
Yeah, that 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 one was approved by a vote.
Yeah, so vote again. That was the form and if you can correct the one on the website, update it, it was officially voted in.
Thank you. We're catching up.
Yep.
We have.
Now we have you.
I would, I would also like to, uh, well, I guess we should have it under administrative matters instead of under this because it's slightly changed your subject. Any other thoughts or questions or concerns?
No.
Alright, so um, we're gonna continue on with our meeting, but you're welcome to drop that check off with Mark. He is our paid administrator.
That's Mark.
And that's Mark. He's the only one of us here that's paid.
Right.
I don't, I don't have a receipt form with me tonight. I wasn't expecting to be collecting payments.
Um, you can just hand.
But I'll I'll email, I'll email it to you.
Yeah, and just a handwriting uh or write out a quick, received, dah 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 dah. Um, unfortunately, we end up having to do business like that across the table periodically. Okay, so
Forty-four Hillville?
On on to the next one.
Old business.
So old business, uh, forty-four Hillville. Um, so there were some correspondence that went back and forth on this. So um, I guess a procedural update from Mark and Bill to get us going on this.
You may have a better perspective off the top of your head.
Oh, sure.
Well, I'll I'll take a stab at it and you can correct, correct me where I mess it up. Um, so back in, I mean, there was a, there was a whole situation where more more trees or trees were cut in a location that you weren't expecting along the scenic road at this, on this lot. Um, so you had extended conversations on that. In January, you issued a decision letter saying, and and the the, some of the remediation steps that were required was replacement of the stone wall and removal of stumps. Um, evidently that happened. You issued a decision letter in January saying that those steps were substantially complete. Um, but that there was a final discussion to take place between Bill and the owners as to some further remediation step that was required. My understanding at this point from Nancy Dennis is that that involves seeding of the roadside, but I stand to be corrected.
So as you recall, they took down really substantial mature trees. Um, and the problem was, of course, the building inspector, the not building inspector, the tree warden permitted them to do so even though it was a scenic road, et cetera, et cetera. They sort of repaired the stone wall. It's a haphazard repair. Uh, but the stumps of those rather significant thirty, thirty-six inch oak trees are buried in amongst the weeds along the frontage. They've never removed them. And the issue there is while it, while there are some boulders, naturally occurring boulders along that frontage, if you were ever to pull in off of the road, you could crash into one of those stumps and that was one of the remediation items that they were supposed to pull out. And if they use an excavator to pull up the stumps, they'll be tearing up that stone wall all over again because, I mean, the stumps are big, some of them are rather substantial. So the whole frontage of that, the stone wall to the street is scrub growth and it's not been touched since they did whatever and I noticed that they're moving in. Uh, so I sent a letter to Mark and to the building inspector saying, hey, you know, they haven't done, they haven't finished what they said that they were going to do. And it's still my opinion, they haven't finished what they said they were going to do. So the stumps need to be ground to a safe and reasonable and whether they have scrub growth in front of their stone wall or not, I don't know, that's really relevant, but the stumps are hazard.
Aren't they supposed to do some seeding too?
Well, if they dig up the stumps, they should at least seed that area, yeah. We didn't, we didn't tell them they had to put lawn in front of the stone wall. They've done nothing. It's just scrub weeds and you can't see the stumps.
I, I clearly remember the issue of the stump and the issue had to do very specifically with regards to the being a road hazard.
Yeah.
And I believe that was acknowledged, I I I recall, I shouldn't say I believe, I I recall it was acknowledged
Right.
by all parties and that it was going to be taken care of.
Right. And I.
I drive by there a lot of, a- as frequently as you do because I live on Hillville Road and I do agree with you that that has not been remediated to the expectations of what had been agreed to at that point in time. And so um, I do believe that, yes, there's been work that has been done, but it has not met the expectations in terms of what was set out by the uh by the um by the board at that time, uh, chair, so.
So I I I guess you need to be clear on what you meant by substantial completion when you issued that letter in January.
Well, they repaired the stone wall. I mean, Mr. Perner actually was the logger on that project and he he rode over the stone wall multiple times to take down the significant trees and took what was a rubble wall and turned it into a flat wall.
Yeah.
Um, and it's been sort of, that part was repaired because really the, we couldn't blame them for the trees, but we certainly could blame them for the wall. Uh, so that was really the substantial part that was complete that the, they promised. It was the middle of winter, it was January.
Mm-hmm.
They didn't wanna dig up the frontage. That seemed a very reasonable thing to do.
So we acquiesced at that point in time and said that they did not have to do it until the spring. Spring has come, summer's come, we're into middle fall, we have very limited amount of time to actually complete this here. And yes, I do also agree with you that there are, that there appear to be people who have already moved in into the property.
I make a motion that we um send a letter to, maybe a registry letter, to the Davison's asking them to.
Dennis.
Dennis.
Dennis's, sorry, asking them to come before us at our next meeting. And in the meantime, you've provided a letter with what they haven't completed. Or where did we leave it?
It's not, it's not specific at this point.
We need, we need to though, if you can, find the the previous information and put it in the documents to update all of us on that. And the letter we just.
The letter you should, in January is in your folder right now.
Yep, yep.
But there were plans and stuff previous to that.
Okay, yeah, I didn't.
Part, part of this was, I think, so that they could get their building permit, cause the whole thing was frozen and they wanted to proceed.
Yeah. Well, where it stands, where it stands right now is that their occupancy permit is on hold.
Oh, well, then they should want to come and deal with us, cause they need to get in.
Yeah. Sure. Yeah.
Yeah.
But I'm wondering.
Which is kind of the situation I was alluding to earlier, that uh, I mean, we Duffy Duffy uh put the occupancy permit on hold on the basis of the email that Bill sent out.
Yeah.
But I think in the future, there needs to be a more clear directive from the board when we wanna do something like that.
Well, I guess maybe.
Yeah, well, which, which having the discussion, it sounds like that was the right step at the, at that time, so.
Yeah. Did the right thing.
But do we want, do we want them to come in? Should that be the next step?
Or we want them to just fix it.
To address?
They need to fix it.
Situation or?
Well, what, what you guys did is you left, I said, because everybody was trying to get everything done, I said I'd be happy to meet with them and s- and describe to them exactly what the anticipation of the board was and they agreed to meet with me and make it happen. So I don't know if you still want to pursue that path or if, or if you wanna take the reins.
Did they ever reach out to you? The Dennis's, did they reach out to you?
They did.
The the communication from Nancy Dennis in your, in your material there is that basically she just said, well, we didn't hear from Bill.
Well, I mean, okay, sorry.
So, so I think they they need to connect and I think they need to comply. Once again, failure to comply is uh is met with a pretty hefty fine there and they also don't have their occupancy permit. So what what are we talking about for them to be done here? Are we talking about them grinding the stumps?
Grinding stumps, raking and seeding, yeah.
Yeah. Obviously, they can't seed right now.
Uh, we can, they can put uh winter rye and hay it and then maybe get a bond from them of five hundred bucks to seed it in the spring and that's that.
Yeah. Nobody's gonna get hurt if they're slow uh seeding it, but somebody will potentially get hurt by those stumps. I didn't even see them. I drove by it yesterday.
Yeah, I kind of saw.
I didn't even see those stumps mixed in with the weeds, so they're definitely a problem.
You can, no, yeah.
I saw that when I came here today.
Yeah.
If if you drive into that frontage, you'll, you'll see a problem.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, don't get me wrong, there is a boulder by the, there's, the neighbor has their mailbox and there's a boulder that sticks out and the mailbox is adjacent to it, so it's not a pristine frontage, but they've created a hazard with with the the stumps in my.
Alright, so as a board, are we gonna suggest that um that Mark reach out to them and tell them to coordinate with Places and put the two in touch and that they should appear at our next meeting and report back?
Say yeah. Yeah. I I would suggest that that be the case. Do we need to vote on this here?
The the letter just needs to state that you know, they need to come before the board, they can talk to our consultant in the meantime,
Yeah.
but to finish the work that was supposed to be done at this property, to just tell us when that'll be done.
Yeah.
But it's, it it, I I think part of this here is is for you to instruct to them very specifically the steps that they need to meet.
I have fluorescent paint.
I'm sorry?
I have fluorescent paint.
Yeah, fluorescent paint.
I will paint stumps.
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah. I think the owner's responsibility is on the property owner to get in touch with Mr. Murray.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Um, okay.
We can still.
But they should be told to come to our next meeting.
Yeah. I mean, ideally with this resolved before then, but.
Correct.
Some stumps ground.
Or at least an understanding in terms of, and an understanding in terms of future steps that have to be taken based on a recommendation that Mr. Murray can come up with. What I mean by that is is when it comes to uh what they need to plant, if they have to do some kind of like winter rye or something else. And you can come up with what suggestions you think are reasonable based on.
Uh, that's really all the only option is winter rye with a a straw bed or something like that'll hold in place.
Sure. Or alternatively, a bond with next year to be returned to them upon completion of the s- sowing of something.
You might, you might still wanna do that, cause winter rye is only a temporary stabilization.
Alright.
If it, if we have.
So you can come up with that suggestion for them and then we can certainly discuss it and take that matter with them, uh, up with them when they are here.
Uh huh.
Okay. But again, I think the important thing is is that it's the owner's responsibility, it's on them, not Mr. Murray to get in touch with them.
Yeah.
And let them know that he's a neighbor.
Final question, do you have any money in your account on that one?
No.
For me to get paid?
Um.
Sorry.
We, we do have some money left in our account, um. We've been spending a lot of it lately.
Yeah.
Did they not put up any money in the beginning for their remediation?
I don't think so, no.
Well, they should be paying him, not us.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
So I think maybe since it isn't completed, they need to come before us first and we need to tell them that.
Yeah.
Yeah, or completed and do bulbs.
Yeah.
Okay.
Here comes the money for you.
We're giving him mixed signals what we want him to do from one to look up to the next.
Yeah. Um.
You can give it to him directly and then you can.
Yep.
We don't wanna keep you any longer if you don't have to stay here. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so what's the the ultimate outcome here then?
I think send him a, send him a certified letter telling and, you know, referencing the matter, right?
Yep.
And telling him it's come to our attention that this has not been completed as agreed upon. And we respect when we are asking them to come to our next planning board meeting to discuss how this is gonna be completed.
Okay.
How and when this will be completed.
And do they need to close the loop with Bill prior to that meeting?
Well, I mean, the whole issue right now is is that.
How do we pay Bill?
Yeah, it's how we pay Bill.
Yeah.
So I don't think that we can ask them to do that. They need to recognize that they have a, if a consultant is going, if if Bill is going to be there, they have to pay his fee, whatever that fee ends up being. It's an hour's discussion, conversation
Yeah.
or or more, I don't know.
So it would be no more than two hours all told.
Okay.
So ultimately, they also could just choose to comply, so
Yeah.
they they could just grind out the stumps and show up at the next meeting and say, I've ground out the stumps, so.
And they'd be planting for?
So I guess they they really have two options. One is if for some reason they feel like we have to keep talking about this, then they're gonna need to make a deposit so we can pay our consultant, or else they can show up in the next meeting and tell us about how they ground the stumps out and they're in compliance. That, that seems like the course to me, so.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, so. Do you think they know what they need to do or do we need to say in this letter?
I don't think that they recall.
They can also watch this on YouTube.
Well, that's why I think they're gonna have to come in.
Yes, you're right.
Yeah. Yeah.
So your, so your January decision letter did not really mean substantial completion, so I'm gonna dig back further to find out what the original conditions were that you required from them.
Yeah.
That's what I was asking.
Yeah.
And reference those and say, the board would like you to either do this and or come meet with them.
Yeah. Yep. Neither, Alice, or I can help you with that.
Well, I mean, substantial complete, it was a lot worse mess than it is now. There was a lot of work they did, but there was an agreement, the season had closed in and they wanted to fill.
Yeah.
So substantial did not mean that it was complete, okay?
Right. Clearly.
And they knew that. They knew what remained to be done, but if they need a refresher course, they can come back here and we'll tell them again.
Yeah. Okay. So that sounds like.
You'll have a draft coming to you on that one.
Alright, so let's move on from that one. So next on the list is twenty-six Worcester Road.
How's it going?
It's bad. How you doing?
Good, thanks.
And just need you to state your names and and addresses for the record.
Maria Dipinto, Three Oaks Environmental. I happen to live on Templeton Road.
I'm Alan Crane, twenty-six Worcester Road.
Thank you.
And uh, I'm looking for, basically, we're looking for the next steps in order to close out the uh clay, the earth removal permit um with some waivers and what the process is to do that. Um, I have some photographs, I have submitted some information already as far as the route that we would like to take. It's um, it's a very interesting habitat out there. Um, there's a lot of cleanup that's going on since uh Francois's was out there. Uh, Mr. Steiger was out a few weeks ago and Alan has uh removed quite a bit of material from the at work area up top.
Yeah, well, there's a, there was a lot of stuff left by the catystoles that we've been cleaning up. And there was some debris that he noticed that we got rid of, brought it to a recycling place over in Berry, Palmer paving, they recycle concrete and asphalt. Um, the bricks that are there that he noticed, I mean, that that whole area isn't even part of the clay pit, never was. That was a work area, but um, those are actually for the church up here that's doing the siding. I let them store some stuff there while they're doing so, those center blocks and bricks are going back to the church.
As far as the the rest of the pit goes, the uh, the slopes that are there, I've been able to walk up them, they're they're three to one slopes. I I've taken some pictures of the slopes that I, as I've walked up them and if you look closely, there is vegetation, they are vegetated. However, minimally in a way, but that's part of the process of this uh site evolving. It's a very slow uh successional process. It's a very slow uh successional process and the fact that it is this very rocky surface in much of the area.
Can, excuse me for a moment, can you try promoting John again? He just messaged in the.
I don't know if I submitted any of these pictures.
Oh man.
For the one picture.
Better.
While you're trying to get him.
Heard the name one, heard the name.
Hey, there we go. John, I think we finally got you through. Can you check your sound settings because his mute is off, but we're not hearing him.
Volume.
I mean, you can also just unplug the speaker if it's just making it more complex.
Yeah, those kids do it.
Yeah, I know. They call it a center.
Uh, John's saying he's still getting no volume. Let me.
Test it.
I'll unmute my computer.
There we go.
So your, it looks like the microphone on your computer is not working. So why don't you just um just unplug, turn off your sound? And um and mute and we'll just use the sound online, I guess. Okay. So.
Without going to the whole thing now, it I suppose it's, um. You have to see what those what those steps are, I. As the season, you know, as we're getting into late fall, you you'll see less of the vegetation is there.
Turn yourself.
Um.
So, uh, can you turn your sound all the way down?
Yeah, once I found it.
Uh, it's gonna be a function key up at the top, I think. That way we don't get the echo.
I started out last November, I got a letter from the planning board last November trying to address those things.
Alright, so.
I had DCR come out to the site, DCR is satisfied with the way it is. They abut the property. Uh, immediately, uh, down slope. Um, there is, uh, there is a U-shaped pond that is on his property. Before you get to the DCR property, because it was clay, there was a lot of fines in that material, so the pond was there to intercept. Uh, runoff and basically hold back any kind of turbidity.
Okay.
Um, but.
Hold on just one moment. Uh, John, can you hear us now? Wow, technology. Can you hear us now?
It's like the Verizon commercial.
Okay, can uh can we hear you now?
Like I went to A T V.
Yeah, I can hear you. For some reason, the uh, oh, can you plug the USB back in there? Oh, yeah, we, yeah, we can hear you, we're just trying to hear you a little louder, so. How about now? Can you hear us now?
Yes, I can.
Hey, everything's working now. Sorry, sorry about that. We we had tried promoting you, I don't know what had gone wrong with that, so.
Okay, no worries.
My apologies.
I was listening.
Um. So, uh, recognizing John DiMoli, a member of the planning board attending virtually. Okay, so sorry, I was distracted trying to fix that. Um, so I guess ultimately. But before we talk about any of the substantive stuff, we need to, we need to talk about what all of this means procedurally. So, about what specifically, um, what specifically the application needs to be and.
Yes, it's like, I think it means it's a change in the earth removal permit in some fashion, amendment, I think I'd be looking for.
So, that would be, that would be along the lines of a material change. Does that make sense to you, Mr. Murray?
Is that what I need to do?
Well, that last meeting, he pretty much laid it all out.
Okay.
Uh, we watched it on YouTube. We we didn't know the meeting got changed from Thursday to Wednesday, that's why we weren't here.
Yep.
Um, no big deal, we were able to watch it on YouTube, so. We got pretty much, you know. It's not, we're not trying to like get away with anything here and, you know, Casello wasn't gonna do it, um, back when Cateysto had the property. And I agreed to do it and the last time I was here, you guys were asking me why I decided to change my mind. It wasn't me, it's actually Casello doesn't even offer this process anymore. Um, after COVID, they don't even do it anymore. And come to find out, she has a report in here that states some of the stuff they spread was contaminated. And it got into some drinking water supplies, so that's a good thing we didn't do it.
It is very fortunate.
And and I was, I wanted to do it, cause that's what the town wanted and I'm not trying to fight anybody, I'm doing what everyone wants, but now that is not an option. In our opinion, to go in there and bulldoze an ecosystem that's been thriving for twenty years, to start over, it doesn't make much sense. There is some hills that, I think Mr. Francois said that he called a cliff. Uh, there's certainly a cliff, cause he stated that he walked up it, um. So, again, we're not here to argue or fight, we're just trying to. Get through this. I mean, I can't even get a permit to build a shed until this is resolved. And it's not totally about the money. I know it's, you know, you guys look at it, ten thousand dollars, well, I've spent a good amount of that with my engineer here and. I spent a lot of money on the house already to, you know, make it better for the community and, you know, up with, right, you know, raise the property values around me. So, I don't, there's nothing sketchy going on up there, we're just trying to get this resolved. I mean, you guys have been dealing with this for quite some time now too. So we're just trying to go the route of least resistance here and get it taken care of. And basically, our our plan is to do nothing, not Mother Nature is taking over. We don't feel that we need to bring bulldozers, man-made objects in in there to disturb it. To start over, you know, and not only did DCR go up there, two experts from them that said it's good. Uh, she had a guy from National Heritage go up there and he wrote, I believe, he has a report in here too. And it's. It's not like a endangered species up there, but it's very rare and unusual and unique. It's a very neat property.
New England just wants to be forest and this is a situation where it's a very slow progression. And it provides habitat for things that just, just can't get that kind of habitat.
Yeah, and one of, to put you at ease, there's not a, there was a four-wheeler up there that you saw. My son rode, is twelve years old, he's the only one that rides a four-wheeler on the property. He wasn't supposed to be out there and then he had a flat tire, cause of a dry-rotted tire and that's why it was sitting there. There's no plans to ride four-wheelers and dirt bikes in there. There is some uh scarring that you saw, that was there before us, there's vegetation growing in it. So we're not out there to turn that into like a A T V track or anything like that.
And I've actually started doing some habitat alteration. I've been removing uh multifloros, I've been cutting some uh. Autumn olive out of there and Natural Heritage recommended that we maintain the meadow on the hillside, the north facing, the north slope facing, face the south. Has uh pine trees on it. They're not invasive, but if we get rid of the pine trees, the meadow can be retained. And we're trying to keep that meadow habitat, so that that's the kind of thing that's going on out there, um.
Okay, so we're going pretty deep down the substantive discussion road and really we need to tie off the procedural issue and.
Yeah.
Refreshing my recollection from the last time we discussed this, I believe we talked about how. Uh, if we were to go forward with this, we need to do it as a um, an application for a modification of the earth removal permit.
Okay.
Um, and. There's some things in the town that we don't have clear administrative proceeds on, so we're trying to figure out the best we can. I don't think we have clear.
Okay.
Uh, guidance on what has to be in that and what constitutes an application uh to modify the permit. Um, I believe there was some correspondence that went back and forth, because for something like this, we would most certainly employ our consultant. How did, how did that correspondence end up?
Uh. Back in November, Alice, you sent out, sent a letter basically kind of describing what would constitute restoration and what the uh remaining. Conditions were that we needed to satisfy or seek waivers from.
Well, specifically what I, what I'm asking is, is I think we requested an estimate from Places Associates on what it would be.
Okay.
Did we?
Yes, and it and it was received, but I didn't, I didn't see any indication that there was a discussion with the property owners.
Oh, okay, so so that did not get forwarded along, um.
So the point in my letter, which I don't have read recently, rewritten, was to say. We do have uh regulations for, you know, re remediation of a permit that deals with things like slopes and basic things. And that those things would either have to be satisfied or there would have to be, in my opinion, a waiver requested for them. And then ultimately, that needs to be pulled together in some kind of an accepted modification of the plan that's in recordable form that could go to the registry of deeds. So. My fair, fair summary, but there are quite a few things there and they need to be addressed and there's this question of who is supposed to prepare this document.
Yeah.
Yes, that's a fair assumption, yeah. Right.
Right.
Because the other one, which Mr. Murray prepared for us, which was, I agree with the Cas- Casello and and I I couldn't make it to the site walk because. Of another event going on in town that I was part of from the Lions Club, but, um. You you know, I, this needs to be done.
Right.
And we've, we're amateurs here and to to spend hours and hours doing this and going through it. So maybe that's something you could do and you could address. In my list, it just listed some of the things that. Need to be either waived or satisfied, right, in my opinion, so, and you could pick a different tact on that if you wanted.
Yeah.
No, uh, that, that absolutely makes sense.
Yeah, I went through each of your. Yeah, I went through each of the things that you stated and explained how they're either satisfied or how how we would like them waived, so.
Okay.
So, yeah, do that something I started that way. So once I have the actual format of how I need to submit this, I could do that.
Okay. And then I think you need to go back and put at the beginning, I mean, you can do it in the form of a draft, that actually helps us. As opposed to an argument with each point. And we can disagree maybe with your, some, some of your conclusions, but unless anybody has a problem with that, if she does it as a, is in a draft format that also includes. Date of the original hearing, the recording information from the register of deeds. Um, uh, you know, that basic in that. The petitioner's requested modification of the following provisions for the following reasons. Right, something that would be it. And then, then then that would have to go to Bill and. Somebody's got a site walk in, you know, where she says the stopes are three to one, you know, is that. Somebody needs to look it over, whether it meets the reality of the ground on the situation, uh, but. I don't think the board should be drafting that document.
Yeah, I I agree with that. Um, either you should be or that would be something we would need to do through our consultant, which would be. An expense we would pass along to you, um.
So to clarify. I, the meat, I think the meat of the discussion that you're referring to on what kind of waivers they want in there, but. Justification is in the, in the submit all of it, is in your packets, but you want some additional, you want it in a different format with. References to.
So, if I can try and interpret. Mary Ann, what I think we're kind of asking you to do is to draft your permit. For the board to then, so you've already done the legwork.
Yeah.
You you you've said, this is a criteria and the applicant asserts that they have met this criteria by this reason. And then you add the sentence, and the board therefore finds the criteria's been met and or the grant of a waiver is suitable. And you and I can work together on that if that's perplexing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I understand. What, does that sound? I mean, it doesn't obligate this board to approve.
Right.
But you've already presented a logical argument in writing and that they've had the opportunity to look at it. They want me to, and I too apologize, I haven't been able to make it out to the site. But they want me to trust and observe.
Okay.
And is that, but you're asking.
Is there not also a hearing requirement?
You have to have a hearing.
Hearing, exactly.
So if there is, there's advertising involved and we should do that sooner than later and I'm gone from November eleventh to December first, out of town kind of thing, so.
Right.
You're all over the place.
Would it bill have that hearing before then or no?
The first Thursday in November, is it possible to get this pulled together in time, no?
No.
Well, the advertising period is.
Maybe. I mean, you can advertise it, you don't have to publish the whole document.
Well, no, you don't need to advertise the document, you simply need to advertise the hearing.
To advertise it.
Yeah.
Well, so the question is, we were to, you have to pay for the advertising too, but if we were au- to authorize him to go ahead, knowing that you would have this cast in presentable form. For.
I'm, I'm at a town meeting on December first.
Is that our next meeting day?
November, whatever the first Thursday in November is.
Well, no, it's first Wednesday now, first Wednesday, third Thursday. We conflicted with the M R P C meeting.
I think it's like. I think it's like the second or the third, something, something in that range.
It is.
I can tell you, I can't make.
Just wait till December then, or?
I I can't make the first meeting in November for this.
Yeah.
Yeah, it it would have been the second, so yeah.
Okay. Alright. Is there, before I leave, is it possible to come out to the site?
The third, second. Oh, yeah.
Okay, if we could start working on it before I leave, that would be great.
We're both in town, it's just.
That's true.
You caught me at a real bad first on the time.
Okay. Alright.
So should we aim for the second Thursday in November, the third Thursday in November?
Which is uh the seventeenth?
I'll be away.
Yeah.
Let's go to December. It's okay to go to December, I just wanna make sure I can work with Bill before I leave.
Will you be out of range, not have telephone?
I'll be in the Mediterranean, I will have a telephone in my, I'm not bringing my laptop, I'm just, just.
I think you should cancel that.
It's been postponed several times because of COVID and finally getting to go, so.
And. What about estimated?
So the first Wednesday in December?
Sure, December seventh.
What about when there's going to be consulting fees along with it? When do we get to that point with this?
I think they already have an estimate.
Okay.
Can we?
Uh, let's share that, uh, if it wasn't shared. So we have an estimate from Places Associates.
Yeah, I, and that, yeah, we definitely have it, uh, I'm not sure it went to the full, no, it probably didn't go to the full board.
Definitely, I wouldn't do that, no.
Okay.
So.
I I sent it to YouTube.
Yeah, so is that what you wanna do at this point?
Yeah. Yeah.
So I have a question. We we are holding ten thousand dollars as a bond. So, if we're gonna get to a point, can you pay it out of the bond at the end?
Oh, that'd be cool, yeah.
Yeah.
I appreciate that, cause I mean, that ten grand has been sitting there a long time, but the previous owner, you know, I paid them that money, you know, when I bought the house, so now. That's fresh out of my pocket.
I I don't know if that's possible to do, that would have to be cleared with Sandy.
What do you think, is there a different purpose altogether?
No, well, I mean, he would, well, alright.
Yeah, no, I I don't think, I don't think we can legally do that.
I'm just saying.
You're you're predisposing that this is gonna be all resolved.
Well, if we're at the point where we're saying we're ready to cast this into a decision, but we can't vote on anything, we're just a suggestion.
But we gotta. Yeah, and it it has to be funded in the revolving account before we can commit Bill to working on something, where already.
Alright, alright.
We are using up way too much.
Then I, maybe we'll try, but if it can't be done with our processes.
I appreciate it. I appreciate that though. That's fine, I I appreciate that.
Yeah, we're gonna run out of planning board money and town's having a tough time giving up money.
Alright, so then do you know what this. Estimate was?
I don't remember.
Did you know, did you get it?
No.
Also, we don't.
Yeah, well, well.
The the dollar figure was.
I know it's four fifty, maybe three hours.
Something in there.
Yeah, well.
It doesn't take that long.
It's about fifty an hour, right?
Yeah, well, we'll send that along on what, um, on what Places Associates has, um, estimated would be for work. Um, and that would need to be deposited with the account, uh, in the planning board account with the check. And we would work off that. If there's anything left over, we return it, so.
And lately I've been under on all of my.
Yeah, there is also a fifteen percent administrative fee that goes on to the, um. Uh, onto the estimate, because that's what funds the planning board to operate.
So I guess my, I guess my four fifty is now reduced by fifteen percent. We forgot to collect it.
Yeah, we did.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, we definitely did.
We also, there'll also be recording fees, that you're not small, the rest is.
So just two to three half hours.
But you already made a report up there before.
Yeah, but that's gonna be.
But it's, we have to do the recording.
Oh, we have to do the recording on that one? Yeah, that would also be the cost of the court.
This is completely different.
So the recording, advertising, the paper.
Trust me, I'm, I'm plenty busy, I don't.
So, so just to summarize, we're talking about, uh, the, the advertising fees, um, so the, the notice of publication. Uh, there would be a recording fee, I, I don't know what that is, uh, but that's also paid by the applicant, and then the consulting fees. Just to make sure we're getting everything up in front on the table.
Sounds expensive.
So, yeah, I know, like, recording and order conditions is a hundred and five dollars, just a recording, yeah.
Yeah, so, so is there a review step here for the rest of the board to look at this estimate before I send it on its way? Or is it just flying as is?
Asking a question.
I mean, the fees are the fees.
Yeah, so.
There's nothing really for the board to review, except for the fact that unless there's something that
Yeah.
Except.
impacts us directly from a budget perspective, and it does not come out of our money, it comes directly from the applicant uh, to fund, plus the fifteen percent, obviously. Okay, I don't think there are any issues.
But you should, but you should, you do need to add on to them the, the, uh, advertising fee, 'cause it has to be done before,
And the advertising.
It's collected before we can put it with the paper, right?
Uh, do you, do you advertise, where it is at, or?
Gardener News.
Gardener News.
Yeah.
Gardener News? I haven't counted them.
So should we, so is our goal then to advertise that hearing for the wor- first week in December, and you're gonna have it drafted out to us to look at before that?
Do you need to advertise two weeks, or just one?
Twice.
Twice, so, it has to be, you'll have, you'll need the money before I leave.
Okay. So.
Before the November eleventh. You'll need to check for the advertising fees.
They can get it out to them tomorrow, and then we'll add the advertising fee to it.
And, and if we're doing it the seventh, then it has to be advertised with the twenty-third and the thirtieth, or whatever that is, the two weeks bef- prior to. Okay.
Okay, so that.
Do you wanna also prepare the, what you would say in the notice to advertise? I would appreciate that.
Okay, get a blurb of his.
And send it to him, and then you, you can look at it.
Yeah.
Which, him is, Mark, or you?
Uh, send it to Mark, and Mark will make sure the right people look at it.
Okay, all right.
Awesome, so that, that sounds like clear next steps, so.
Good, that's helpful.
She has a lot of work in this.
Yeah.
Okay.
Let me curve.
Because she's got all of that down, and somebody's gotta do that.
It's good.
Make it work, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
They get it, get it to flow, right?
It's gonna be more expensive for you to have Bill cast it, right?
Yeah, well, trust me, there's not much of that tang room left.
Okay, so.
That's why I always wanna get this done with, so we can build a shed.
Okay, so that is the end of the discussion on that one.
Thanks for having us.
All right, thank you.
Thanks for coming.
See you again, Bill.
For coming.
Take care.
Pleasure.
And we'll keep, keep touching.
You got my contact info, you don't need a card, do you?
So, so recognizing that we're
I'm trying to speed dial.
Yeah, it's.
We're running late, but it's been a pretty full agenda, uh, let's, uh, let's try to be efficient with these next, uh, several items. So next on the list is Lot seventy-two, um, off of Selfridge Lane, and discussion of road status, and I always get these road ones confused. So, um, uh, Mark, can you tell us a little bit about what went on with this one?
Alex can probably tell us more.
Okay.
It's been a, it's been an ongoing situation.
I, I can't, I, where, so, this is not the first time we've looked at this lot. This is a lot, there is, um, this is a lot where the street was, was laid out, it was a path that went through the DCR land. Um, but it was never, but there's a, a point on access GIS where it actually stops, and it dead-ends into this lot, and that is the only frontage this lot has. Unless you count the cart path that goes, you know, the old paper road that went through it, so it's officially a lot without frontage. So they could do the same thing, they could put it, they could buy it, they could put a cul-de-sac and end it, and have the house lot created that way. But the question that came up that we talked about was, um, could I point to the exact place where those, that path was discontinued, I mean, there were votes to discontinue some of these, um, and I couldn't, I don't know it. But it's very clear on access GIS, the, the marking at the end of the road, and then it's a dash line from there on.
But that's the applicant's responsibility, not the town's.
Oh, to figure out what the history was?
That's why you hire a surveyor.
Well, this is the one that we have the update on.
Well, regardless, yeah, regardless, uh, I, I do have an update on this.
Okay, so that's.
I, I mean, the, you know, the underlying, as near as I can tell, the underlying point of contention here is that they're, they're trying to claim, well, it's a town road, so we do have frontage, and we're saying, no, it's not a town road, it was discontinued.
Right.
It was in fact discontinued in eighteen ninety, we have the language and the original vote for discontinuing this Selfridge Lane east of the gate to Selfridge's, which is roughly where you describe it, um, ending the solid line on the map.
Did you say nineteen ninety?
No, eighteen ninety.
Eighteen ninety.
Eighteen ninety, are you kidding me?
That's a deep dive in the vault.
Yeah.
Wow.
And furthermore,
wow.
um, the language, the language is that the, the existing lane east of, east of this gate, across land of Moses Bennett, is discontinued. Um, I did the deep dive into the registry and verified that the land of Moses Bennett is Lot seventy-two.
Really?
So.
So it goes all the way to, what's the road on the other side, Flag Street?
So this, this is. This is indisputably discontinued.
I love it.
Across their property.
Good for you. I mean, to find it, to, to nail it down, we need to.
I didn't include the original source materials in your packet, uh, I didn't figure you wanted to deci- decipher eighteenth and nineteenth century handwriting.
I mean, it'd be fun to look at.
So, uh.
Well, we have it, we have it in the vault.
All right, so the question is, is the applicant, have we written a letter back?
Well, there's not really, I mean, there's
A question or?
She sent it, she, most recently.
Yeah.
She sent out a, uh, another email inquiry, saying, well, isn't there something about ancient, ancient ways, and what would be required? You know, what can, what can I do to develop this parcel, and no, we haven't responded to that.
But she, but she does, I think, this is Mary Bellotti, right?
It's Callie DeVico.
It's who?
Callie DeVico.
Callie DeVico.
Oh, okay, different person, all right, so, uh, we have the same problem with actually two lots, but.
Uh, it's, you, you and Chris confuse the same two, same two projects.
Yeah, we're gonna talk about that soon, but yeah, no, I can use this.
No, no, I do know this one, though, I know our Selfridge's, I just had the name of the people mixed up.
Yeah.
I just, I just think that they're entitled to a letter saying that this road has in fact been, we researched the matter, and the road has in fact been discontinued at this point. So the only option would be to go through subdivision regulation, but we do have a five hundred foot dead-end road limit.
Well, wouldn't, wouldn't it be, the road's been discontinued at this point, and if they wanted to figure out what else they had to do for, they'd be looking at some kind of zoning determination? Or?
I, I would send them towards an attorney to say that the town is commits, based on record information, that the road is discontinued in any extension of the road, we recommend you consult legal counsel.
Any comment?
I like that. Because there are ancient ways and ways in existence prior to zoning, and if the right-of-way was maintained and had more than one person, they may or may not have a claim that it's a right-of-way prior to zoning, blah, 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 blah. And that's for somebody else to solve, that's not for you to solve, or present.
Okay. That sounds reasonable to me. Anything else on that one? All right, so moving down the list, uh, Friends Farm, AKA Maple Lane off of
That's the other one.
Williamsville Road.
It's the same issue.
We'll let Mark catch up.
Um, so this one, um, we got an inquiry from one of the Cranstons.
Yeah.
Paul, either Paul or Alan, um, Runberry, had a potential buyer for the large lot associated with this paper road. It was originally a three, three-lot subdivision. The, the lot, I guess two of the lots are built on. The, the main lot is, uh, um, a group home, which is situated at the end of what is currently a driveway, but was supposed to be a regular subdivision road, based on the original subdivision approval. All the paperwork indicates that there was a bond, association, performance bond associated with that road construction. Cranston wanted to know, um, so what happened with that? The road was never built, are you still holding a bond? What's, what's the deal here? If you look at our town accounts, there is in fact an account called Friends, this was originally called Friends Farm subdivision. There is a, a bond out there for roughly twenty-one K for Friends Farm.
Really?
Nobody knows anything more than that about it, other than the balance.
A cash bond.
I can't, I can't locate any paperwork associated with this, other than the subdivision approval that said a bond would be required, and, and the current accounting balance of a, a bond.
So there is the money there, there isn't the money there, we don't know.
But I guess it's there, I don't.
It appears it could be there.
Wow.
But I don't know how to bring this to any kind of resolution, and I don't know whether it's gonna be a research, deep dive task for the new town administrator.
Is there anything in the registry of deeds on it? Hmm? Is there anything in the registry of deeds that we could look at for this particular lot?
There's a recorded subdivision plan.
The recording, the recorded subdivision plan.
There's no mention there about any, uh, any bonds that may have been.
It, it does, it does suggest that there was a bond associated.
The, the question about the.
But there's no language on, of, of physical bond.
Who put up the bond? In the notes, is it, is this Friends Farm?
Presumably.
Well, the question about the bond status should certainly, um, uh, at least go to the attention of the town administrator.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe town treasurer.
Yeah.
She doesn't know anything, other than the balance.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. What is the date from?
Is the way accepted by the town?
No, well, I mean, in what sense?
So, when you do a subdivision, you, the reason we beat people up over a subdivision, so-called beat'em, make them comply to the regulations, is so that the road is built to the standards of the town, which is why you have a bond, to make sure that that happens. And then, if you've done that, you petition town meeting to accept the way as a public way. So, if, if they, if it was not approved as a paper street in the, explicitly in the subdivision approval, then they never built it in accordance with the requirements of the plan, and they never petitioned the town for approval of the street.
That.
But how?
So the bond could use to petition the town to approve the street or not.
So I'm not.
But the group home was built.
Well, that's a, of course, a proven color.
Yeah, well, if they, if they didn't do their obligations, I, I assume there's some, something somewhere about forfeiture of the bond.
I mean, but the lots are gaining legal frontage and access off of a pub-, uh, private way. May or may not, I don't wanna jump to the assumption that it was approved to be a public way, it could have been approved as a private way.
So, here's another angle for this, uh, it's definitely something that should be escalated to the town administrator, 'cause this sounds like it's something that should be handled as a legal issue from town council. Because there's questions on whether or not, uh, we can prove who, who actually was the grantor for the bond, um, and, uh, whether or not they forfeited, and what our next steps here should be, I think that's the, the path forward, because the one we have to resolve somehow.
I, but I have a question. I mean, we do need the answer just for bookkeeping purposes, but Cranston represents, Attorney Cranston, the person wants to buy this land, so it's not his bond to claim.
No.
So the question is, who owns the land, and Cranston should be told to address the current owner of the land, who's the only person that would have any.
Claim.
Claim.
Unless somebody else bought. So, in, yeah, they're complicated, and the, who owns the fee interest in the right-of-way? Because I also think, and I'm not an attorney, but I think each of the lot holders probably have a right to a portion of the bond, if it's gonna be forfeited or something like that, too.
This is sounding an awful lot like a legal opinion from town council.
Definitely is.
But, but I don't see that.
We're also running late, so I don't wanna go too deep.
Mr. Cranston, I just don't see that we owe them an answer to that, the bond, because it's a buyer, I mean, we should know.
We owe our, we owe ourselves an answer, because if it's potentially forfeited, the, the town should be aware of that.
Well, we need, we should, he should report back on the status of whether it exists, or whatever leads you have it.
I will be happy to forward this to town administrator.
There you go.
Yeah.
Further consideration.
And then I'll be happy to meet with her for hours about it.
And did, so did anybody answer back to Mr. Cranston?
Yes, I, I told them that the extent of our, our records that I could locate was the subdivision approval, which does suggest that a bond exists.
Okay. But he knew.
That was the last communication.
But he knows, he knows about the subdivision, 'cause in his letter, he pointed it out.
Yeah, I mean, there's a recorded subdivision.
He knows, he knows it, I wouldn't spend, I would not spend town council money chasing that down unless there's a good reason to, but.
Unless there's an actual claimant to the bond.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so, we can spend a ton of time talking about that, but let's move on, so, next is administrative matters. We have invoice approval, Places Associates for Vertex and Paper Crane advertisement. So, those documents are in the, um, in the Google Drive, um, assuming everybody's had a chance to take a look at them, are there any questions?
I see three invoices, right?
So, yeah, well, yeah, there's three, there's three accounting distributions, uh, there's actually only two invoices. There's the Places invoice for review of drain, drainage gals on Vertex. And there's two advertisements, um, one, one is for Paper Crane, that'll, that'll go against, uh, their, their account, their dedicated account. The other, the other advertisement was for advertising costs on.
Local IQ?
Scenic, yes, local IQ or both, Gardener News. The second, the second advertisement was for a public hearing, scenic road hearing on tree cutting by the DPW on Cruz Road. I asked, I asked Sandy where that should be charged against, and she suggested the planning board revolving account.
Did the, did the DPW deposit?
Why would it be the DP?
Did the DPW deposit funds with the planning board for that, do you have any idea? Well, if they didn't, I would like to say, let's not have a motion on approving that one, um, unless anybody felt passionately about making that motion, 'cause I, I don't, we, we're not pa- allow me to suggest that the board not consider paying that out of our revolving account, that is very limited.
But it does need to be paid.
Yeah, and we, uh, we, we should suggest.
So we need to.
I'm adding, you can, you can approve the portion of it that is allocated to Paper Crane.
We should suggest that the DPW deposit funds with us for the purpose of paying that, or that the DPW, uh, should pay that? Uh, as they have a several hundred thousand dollar budget, and we have no budget.
It's the applicant pays it.
Yep, and they're the applicant.
And they were the applicant.
So which one is which? 'Cause we got two, one for a hundred and thirty, one fifty, the other one for a hundred and twenty-six, twenty-four.
I don't, I don't know that.
Uh, well, the, the local IQ has two publications in it.
Oh, actually, I, I do know, I do know, I do know, it's a hundred and thirty-one fifty is the, uh, Paper Crane. It's the one twenty-six, twenty-four that was, uh, DPW.
So one thirty-one fifty is funded, one twenty-six, twenty-four is not.
Correct.
Yep. Somebody like to make a motion.
All right, so you need a motion to get this one here?
If you'd like to make it.
With Paper Crane.
I'll make, I'll make a motion that we approve the local IQ. I'll make, I'll make a motion that we approve the local IQ, uh, being the vendor, invoice in the amount of a hundred and thirty-one dollars and fifty cents, uh, for the purposes of the, uh, for, for the, uh, work that was done, I'm sorry, I don't think work. For the advertisement that was done, uh, on Paper Crane.
Second.
Hearing, um, motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, uh, I'd like to call for a vote.
Liddai.
Steiger, aye.
Monroe, aye.
Demalia, aye.
Excellent, and the motion carries unanimously. Uh, so next on the invoices is a invoice for a Places associates for doing work related to Vertex. And this is work that was funded with money that was deposited with the board. This is the drainage calculations. Which came in nicely under budget, thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions or?
How much was originally placed in, by, by Vertex for?
Four thousand dollars?
Four thousand?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it came in at eighteen hundred and thirty-seven fifty?
Because we were in a high-pressure situation in the meeting and said, can you please just quote us a number now? It doesn't matter if it's high, we just need a number.
No, even before went, our fifteen percent.
And we even forgot. But there is additional work, so that, that money's gonna go to something, and those town council fees. Uh, that, that money isn't going back, it's paying for a bunch of other things.
Well, indisputably, we owe this to Bill.
Yes, we do.
And that was agreed on.
Yes.
So I make a motion that we approve, uh, the Places Associate bill for work done on the drainage calculations.
Hearing a motion, do we have a second?
I second that motion.
Hearing a motion and second, do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, I call for a vote.
Steiger, aye.
Liddai.
Monroe, aye.
Demalia, aye.
And we have an aye from Demalia. We accidentally spoke over each other. Alright, so that is approved.
I got you. Oh, uh, yeah, let me just, let me scratch this one out.
That registry of deeds signature.
Yep. Alright, so moving down the list, we have board member signature for registry of deeds. We're all gonna need to sign that, and we can do that. And John, you'll have to swing by at some point to sign that in the near future.
Then Bill Holmes too.
Yep, and, uh, Bill Holmes will too. Okay, so, uh, John, did you catch that? You're gonna have to swing by the office and sign that, uh, when you can. Just catch up with Mark on the time.
It'll, it'll be with the town, town clerk.
Oh, he'll be with the town clerk apparently, okay.
But we can sign it while we're here.
Yes, we can all sign it while we're here.
I think they're supposed to be black pen or something.
I got one there.
Yeah, I know they, they are picky about it. So next on the list is a thirty-three seventy-one balance due from Royal Sun Farms. Mark and I talked about this. I couldn't remember from what it was from, so I just put it on the agenda so we could talk about it.
So do we know what it's due from?
Um, I, I requested a, uh, I was talking to Kelly, the town accountant, and she indicated that this was, uh, this was, essentially their account was overdrawn. And that she had asked Mallory to follow up with Paper Crane to get it paid, and then, but that didn't happen, and she said she was willing to make that contact. I just assumed that they're gonna want some detail on how they, how they arrived at this point.
It's not Paper Crane, it's Sunrail Farm.
Sunrail.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yeah.
Damon's, Damon's account.
Got them reversed. Yes. So, um, anyway, I didn't get a re, I didn't get the, the detailed report that Kelly asked, I asked Kelly to run, but I was just curious whether anybody knew off the top of their heads, uh, about that account being, uh, running over what was originally funded.
Do you know what the bill is for? Is it to Places?
I don't know.
I suspect it is.
Can you get him the answer to the question?
I, yeah, I saw the.
If you have one that matches it up, and then we'll take it up.
I would imagine it's fifteen percent less than I thought you. If I sent you an invoice, Mallory would have added the fifteen percent to it.
Okay, so then you can find the invoice, then it just seems to be.
Well, I'll, I'll dig.
I think, I think he's just gonna need to do some.
Okay, so he'll send it, you're gonna say the other fifteen percent was the administrative fee. Maybe you can find that invoice too.
You can pull this up?
I will.
Yeah. Both, both of the cannabis facilities are pretty responsive, so I imagine once you get to the bottom of this.
Yeah, yeah, there's no, there's no action item for you here right now. I just was curious whether anybody knew, knew about it.
So D is preliminary discussion of application process checklist, dates received, et cetera. Uh, I would like to kick that off by saying, one of the things that I would like to see going into next year is a revised, um, a revised fee schedule. Uh, and I think there's some things that we should put on that, cause I, I think going forward, we should just estimate what we think notice is gonna cost for the year. And we should just have, uh, a flat rate for putting in a, a scenic road. Or, or at least get, get as close as we can, and if there's overage, we bill it back and put some kind of asterisk there. But I think we should do that, and I think we need to adjust some of our other language on it. I don't think we need to do that at this meeting, but it's something I would like to see us get done for the end of the year, and perhaps just put on a yearly rotation for updating. And just have like a twenty twenty-three schedule of fees, or twenty twenty-four schedule of fees. And just flag that as something that the board updates, because those notice fees are gonna go up over time. And by flagging it as a yearly schedule of fees, it's gonna have to get reviewed every year, because people feel like, well, why are you billing me the twenty twenty-three fee? This is twenty twenty-four, so.
But you gotta, you gotta be careful that you segregate the, the passing on the costs from the actual fees, cause fees had to be voted on at town meeting in some cases.
Okay.
Depends. It's tricky. We went back and tried to bring it forward, cause it hadn't been adjusted since like twenty twenty. And so in two thousand seventeen, we brought them up.
Okay.
But you gotta look at what where the, where the bylaws say fees set by the planning board, so we have the ability to set them, and where they have been set by.
Town meeting.
Town meeting. That's the issue.
So maybe the way we do this is we have like a yearly estimated expense for like those notice fees or something? Or maybe this becomes a non-issue once, well, no, I think it's always an issue, because things are, are go, we, we need to plan for the people after us, and try to make their lives a little bit easier.
I just think you can't roll it into the standard filing.
Yeah, no, I think you're, I think you're right.
Okay.
We're gonna have to research that, and I don't think we need to take up a ton of time talking about this particular particular issue, other than to just flag it as something on the radar, and we have some things that we need to think about with it.
Before somebody jumps in and makes a motion to adjourn, which I'd be delighted to do, I, I really need to ask. We have gotten again bogged down in getting these bylaws out. And I am beside myself at trying to get that done. Jeffrey, Jeffrey, what's his name? Blake, I think, town council, right? He reviewed it. He sent, he sent it to me. I sent it back to him, responded to his questions. And then, and then it's been stalled there. So, I don't feel like as chair, as not being chair, I can call up town council and but do you, could you take it up with Sandy to follow up on it?
Yes.
I know that.
I will, I will take it up with the new person, because, uh, they inter, the select board interviewed somebody, they offered them the job, subject to negotiations. So, um, I don't, I don't think Sandy's gonna do much on that, if there's gonna be somebody else new in it in a week or two. So, I know it's frustrating.
I know, but it's weeks and weeks, and then the new person will come, and they have a big learning curve.
Uh, we, we don't, we don't have to let them wait on the curve. We're also in a tough spot, cause this is essentially the first time we've had a meeting in a long time, where we've been kind of back at full strength, or at least full operational. Like, there's a long way to go, but this is, this is the first time we've really been back on track in a while.
I'd also like to remind the board that there is one, uh, bylaw that is still pending with the Attorney General's Office.
Right.
And that should be coming to us in about three weeks. So having that wait.
We're always waiting though, for the next thing.
No, I, I, I get it.
And these are five years on a date.
So, so I, I'm gonna suggest that we need, I can, I can also e, I will email Carolyn and Sandy about it.
Thanks.
It's certainly gonna get reserved for the next person, but we can at least get that going.
Yeah.
And, uh, and when the new person comes in, express very vigorously that that's something that needs to happen.
You could put, if you could just put Jeffrey Blake.
Yep.
Along with Carolyn on that, cause Carolyn referred it to him. He's the one that sent it to me.
Okay. Yeah, I will.
We, we can.
And I don't think we should wait for the best, because if that needs revision too, then it'll say, okay, well, wait till town meeting when we can revise it. I mean, a joss needs to be done.
So we'll, we'll follow up on it, but, but I, I believe, uh, for, for administrative processes, I think Mark had some comments on that too, before we completely move off of that.
Yeah, well, I wasn't gonna, I wasn't gonna present any detail, so I, I think, I think I'll pass on that for tonight.
Okay. Yeah, it's gotten late, but it's certainly something that we, we all know we have.
But I, let me, let me say on the, on the bylaws, uh, we can make that a three-way discussion, once, once the TA comes on.
Just to go back quickly on the forums, I'm sorry, you were saying, go ahead, Mark.
Once, once the bombs start, once the construction season winds down and the bombs stop going off, I should be able to, uh,
Yeah.
put some time into that. And it is a really important issue, especially for your new zoning enforcement officer. The only thing he has to go by right now is the published bylaws, and issue came up the other day about accessory dwelling units, and it happened.
It's, I, I went through it meticulously. Really, all you have to do is have somebody that can figure out how to get the footnotes, which are correctly numbered, even though the one and the two are skipped.
Yep.
On the right place at the bottom of the page.
I, I understand your passion on this issue, but I also understand it's five of nine, so.
Alright, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Alright, hearing a first, do we have a second?
Uh, I just wanna get one thing in. Uh, we did mention earlier that.
I guess we don't have a second, so not hearing a second.
I just, just need a few more, few more seconds. We, just, just wanna keep in mind, the forums that we're talking tonight, that are not on the, uh, on, on our website, uh, if we can maybe have an inventory of what is missing. And you brought together, you brought to a point that the zoning determination, and I think the one for, um, exactly. We need to just make sure that we have the right ones up there, because I think that, that's critical as.
That would be nice.
Yeah.
Yeah, there is, there's a project list, uh, well, it's the project list that we've reviewed as an exhibit, which we'll get back on as an exhibit. I was just, uh, cramped for time for this meeting.
I, I get it.
But, uh, but that is a high priority item on the, um, on the strategic and tactical tracking exhibits.
Go ahead, make the motion.
I renew my motion to adjourn.
I second the motion.
Hearing a first and a second, uh,
Undebatable.
Undebatable. Liddai.
Monroe, aye.
Demalia, aye.
He's gone.
Meeting adjourned at eight fifty-six.
Well, you made it before nine. Congratulations.
Excellent. Thank you, everybody. Thanks, John.
Mark, you get the signing sheet?
Thank you. So Mike, uh.
Don't forget to end the recording.
Yeah.
I mean, that was a long meeting, but we got a ton of stuff done.
Very good, Christopher, you did a good job.
I need some energy.
I mean, I got about four hundred at least, thank you. Well, I, um, I'm organizing a mountain bike ride down the Nuxbridge, and they're one of the sponsors, so they donated four hundred cans for it.
Hey, alright.
It's not bad. It apparently comes from the Netherlands. I wasn't expecting that. I've drive down to Stanford, Connecticut to pick them up today. Uh, while working on the phone in the car. So.
Multitasking, always good.
Yeah, I was mostly just listening to meetings.
I mean, it depends if I can make them.
Actually, I don't even know when it's gonna be, because we've gotta reschedule it.
Oh, I mean, it was warm.
Oh, that'd be a conflict. Um, there was, no, um, this procedural issue that I, I've gotta get resolved with Jeff. Because he, he, I made informational comments when it was, the, uh, item raised is an agenda item.
Do we have to?
You smoked way too much.
Oh, oh, wait, wait, wait. Let's get signatures.
They'll let them out without a signature.
Did you know we have to sign the bottom section too?
I need a block to do it. I need at least three.
Do you know if we have to sign the bottom section on this too?
Oh, yeah, I'm not sure.
We have authorized agents signing for approval not required. I think, uh, I think we have to sign in both places.
Yeah, I, I think it would be safe to sign in both.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, before we leave then. And this is just to get this paid, right?
Yeah.
You know, I had looked at this form. Talk about the state doesn't do much better with forms than we do, and I can't remember the answer to that question. Five plus one associate. So Erica has to be, and I think, it doesn't say number of signatures required. Authorized agents for signing not proven required. I think you gotta sign at both places, but then if I sign it, I'll find out that that was wrong. Should I, should we do it, Christopher? Go ahead, let's try it.
Well, Mark, what do you think? Cause you're the one who's gonna have to chase us down if we get it wrong.
You can make a copy and then.
I was just.
Oh, that, that has to be the original one, we already signed it.
But isn't it down loaded for form?
Print another form, print another form, do one one way and the other one the other way, and then you have to chase it down.
And we're, we're not, we're not under that much time pressure. If it, go ahead and sign it below, if I find out that it's wrong, then we'll be old at next time.
I thought, I was thinking there was some language about, well, if they're the same group appealable, but I don't see it on the form, so.
Six weeks ago.
What is it?
Okay, Christopher.
Oh, yeah, let's see here.
Forty, forty-two.
Old moose droppings.
Here.
No.
I was using the wrong color.
Can you, can you tell us, give us a, a little hint on the context?
Good night, everybody.
Much from, oh, turtles!
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought it was a this.
Forty-two of them.
I saw quite a few were dead on the road.
No, these, these made it all the way to the phone, because I brought them there. These were little baby, baby turtles.
Joyce, Joyce Green found the original, uh, discomfitment.
Came out, out of a small, I mean, the hole was not bigger than this here.
Walking it down with, uh, tying the parcel to, uh, the old.
Great, we need more snapping turtles. It's mother nature.
Do you know Massachusetts has the hag, and I think maybe still has, at least up to nineteen ninety, the record snapping turtle by weight?
Wow, that's gonna be a monster.
No kidding?
It was seventy-six plus pounds.
No kidding?
Yeah.
I, I live on Moose Horn Pond, and I went out there once, and I was in my canoe, and I saw this island floating.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
And it was a deer that had drowned.
Oh, jeez.
And the snapping turtles were eating it from underneath, pulling it down, bouncing it in the water.
That's kind of awesome.
That was pretty wild.
So it was an orange, I forget the name of the pa, pond there.
Well, Mark, it's good to meet you finally.
Yeah.
And my diatribe that I sent you the other day.
Yeah, I wasn't, uh, I wasn't entirely sure what your point was there, saying that you weren't a participant, but.
I'm not a participant.
Presenting the whole laundry list of every possible applicable, applicable and relevant regulation.
Yep. They, they, they got themselves into a little hot water, I think.
Seventy-six and a half pounds. Well, this guy from Maine goes all over, but a bunch in Massachusetts, and, um, hunts for snappers, cause they're the only turtle here that's, um.
Your one friend to hunt.
Yes. When I say a sporty, uh, you know, one we can take and hunt.
Right, right.
Alright, Mark, well, I'll, I'll look for when the next, uh, open space meeting.
It was on the fax machine, a little bit, huh?
Yeah, yeah. And the, the one other issue I was gonna mention was if any of the land trusts had been contacted. I know we kinda have a, a, the checklist. Uh, and I didn't see what the recommendation cited in there, but.
Oh, yeah, sure. Like, my uncle was in Nigeria.
Would have been a ten, ten million dollars if.